Line it up.
We'll start. Call this work session to order. Welcome, everybody. It all happened in snowy roads. So we're going to have this work session in preparation for our meeting later this afternoon. And unfortunately, we had Margot help him set up to facilitate, and she had a family emergency at the last minute and was not able to attend and was not able to find out any other alternative facilitators. So it's just us today. So as far as this work session goes, the goals of this session are to assess where we stand right now and provide clear direction for the future with a focus on solutions. So that's kind of my goal statement for the session. We're going to divide this into three parts. First, we're going to get an update on where we stand, and Greg will be providing a report as far as all the construction-related activities in the main part of the meeting. So this part will be focused on our legal responsibilities and our options. And our bond attorney is on hand to answer questions. So if you have a manual from her. Next, we're going to, I'm going to ask board members to provide a brief summary of where they stand on this project. And I'd like to have each person summarize their vision of how the proceeds of the bond should be used in their preferred path forward. This is a time to share questions, concerns, but to give everybody a clear understanding of where we're at right now. And then finally, we need to provide direction to staff as far as how how we're going to proceed in the life of Randy's situation and and give Todd some clear direction, which that's really important. So Todd, do you want to introduce the memorandum? And just kind of an overview of what we've been doing, where we stand?
I can't get on Zoom. I'm sorry.
Oh.
I don't know why.
You might be using the wrong one.
Then can you help?
Maybe send her the right one. You're not showing up as a
I know. I don't. I thought I had the sorry, I apologize.
No, not your fault. Well, first of all, based on just the fact of where we are, I thought it would be important for the board watching all the way.
Almost there. She should be asking for permission.
Make sure you
How's it sound? Okay?
Yeah. Okay.
Be good? Yeah. Okay.
So just based on where we are, knowing that we ran into a roadblock with the text amendment to bring the Central Library land into the city of Bend, I thought it would be important for us to talk with Bulgon Fugor, our bond counsel, really just to remind us all and give you a chance to ask questions of her and what we can and can't do based on the bond language that we passed in November of 2020. And the memorandum that you have in front of you is, I just reissued that. She did give that to us in July of last year. We looked at it at the board meeting, but we didn't really discuss it. So it has some of the basic facts in there, but I also really would hope that you take advantage of the opportunity to ask questions of her as we move forward. So Bulgon, hopefully you can hear us first of all.
Hi, yes. Some technical difficulties. So I appear as Sarah's iPhone because I'm borrowing a device from my colleague. But hi, all I'm on.
I guess I guess probably I'd like to open it up to the board to see if you have any specific questions for Bulgon. Why don't you have her go over her memorandum? Could you hear that, Bulgon?
It could, and I'm happy to do that. And I think that also provides a good opportunity to just sort of step back from the memo too and where you were, are in terms of the timeline of a bond. So I'm sorry.
You just cut out a little bit.
Cut out?
It's cutting it out.
Is it better or no?
All right, well, let's try to move forward and see what happens.
Okay, just stop me if I cut out again and I'll try to find a different solution. So you know, the big picture. Well, let me just introduce my first, which is that as I'm Bulgon or I'm a bond lawyer, bond lawyers are very, it's a very big subset of the law. There's just a handful of people in Oregon who and essentially what we do is all day work with local governments like you doing borrowings. Already my work is doing geo bonds. I also represent a lot of governments that do other kinds of borrowings, like for utility systems. But the thing I'd like to point to that your value.
I think we're going to try to find another solution for you. The sound's just cutting out too much.
Okay. Let me try to
Okay. This is Lori.
Oh, wait.
There's snacks up here. Already always giving them treats. The donut over here, too.
Oh, I love you better.
Love yourself now sometime.
Nice thing with the transcript is Lori is now warrior instead of warrior.
Yeah. We should be giving you treats.
Yeah, I know. Really.
It's just now. Now those points are for less. So I think it's just Get the donuts, too.
The donut. Donuts.
Okay, let's see if that's working.
You can't hear.
Make sure you're maybe chat to her saying
What she just like that?
Oh, she didn't.
For those of you watching at home, this is live TV. So it's funny, the trailer again.
Self-muted in order.
Yes. Okay. Try that again. Can you hear us?
Yeah. To self-concall and not worry about singer.
Right.
Hi, folks. I just tried to call in. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Isn't it amazing that we're two years into this and yet there's still um so I'll start over where I thought I left off. But I think I had been asked to go through the memo, which I'm happy to do. I also think this provides an opportunity for us to sort of step back from the memo and talk big picture about where you are in the lifecycle of a bond. So as you know, the ballot title, which is the document that I'm holding up, this is the document that has the caption, the question, and the summary is the most important document. That's your contract with your voters. So when the district went out to voters, it promised to do the project as they are laid out in this document. So this is sort of the constitution, if you will. This is what we look to to determine what the district's responsibility is regarding the projects. And the good news is it's all written down. Bad news is, you know, you would have to go back out vote in order to substantially deviate from this because that's the only way to get the blessing from the voters again would be to do the same process that you have gone through initially. So you know, as asked, I'll go through the memo, which is there's a requirement under Oregon law. In addition to the requirements under the law, of course, there would be a requirement in terms of your relationship with your electors to honor the requirements of the ballot title. And where I would rep specifically is in the summary, that's where most of the meat is, right? So the summary says this measure would authorize the district's public library district to issue up to $195 million in principal amount of general obligation bonds to renovate, upgrade, construct, and equip library facilities. If approved, this measure would finance capital costs, including projects that, and it lists these several bullets. That's really the, again, the meat of the projects that were promised to voters. The next section of the memo goes into the part of the law that's not outlined in the ballot title explicitly, but essentially these geo bonds can only be used for capital costs. They can't be used for soft costs. I don't think that's an issue that you are facing right now. And then the third part of the memo just sort of puts in perspective how important these rules are. You know, that there's, these are government funds. And there is, you know, significant risks to spending money outside of the authority in the ballot title. And I'm done speaking now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So given this, what specific questions do you have as far as how this relates to the bond project and where we are currently?
Well, so is the title bonds to renovate, upgrade, construct, and equip library facilities? That is the title?
Does the ballot title include the summary?
That's a great question. So the ballot title includes all three of those.
Okay.
The caption, the question, and the summary. Yes, that, so that those three elements together make up the contract with your voters.
Okay. How about additional questions?
And so you're saying our responsibility, what we are being held to is the title and then also the summary, the bullets that explain what the bond is to cover, correct?
That's right. Yeah, so you read all of these three elements together, the caption, the question, and the summary that includes those bullets. And the only reason I specifically pointed to the bullet rather than the rest of the document is because that's where you're describing the project.
I have a question. If we deviate from this, you said we would have to go back to, for another vote. And how far do we need to deviate from it before we have to go back to another vote? And if we do deviate and don't go back to another vote, are we liable for a lawsuit?
So all great questions. I mean, this is where the magic is, right? There's no, you know, I can't say if you deviate by two feet or, you know. So the world changes, of course. This happens to many local districts where you anticipate, you know, being able to plot of land, but that plot of land is not available, et cetera. And that's why this ballot title wasn't drafted to say, you know, X improvements will be exactly these specifications and exactly at this address. That's why it's written more broadly to say, provide a library, provide a new Redmond library, repair, modernize. That's why the language has a little bit of wiggle room because you don't want to be bound by the facts, you know, at a certain date. So I would say that, buddy, it's all a fact analysis, right? We'd have to look at what, what kind of, how much deviation are you thinking of? I mean, I think, you know, I've heard that the original site of the Central Library may not be available. But this document doesn't say that the site has to be in a particular location, right? It just says that there has to be something that is a central library. So it has to be reasonably interpreted as meeting this sort of the promise to voters. And then if there isn't, as you know, local governments are always subject to challenge for any kind of action that's outside of authority in the context of the provisions around specific actions that can be taken to challenge, and those are all outlined in section three.
So if right now, Ben City Council has said that, or it looks like we're not going to be able to use the property
Right now, talking about the bond project.
And we use the money to purchase another piece of property? Is that acceptable?
Yes, I mean, I'm going to give you a very that we would need to look at the full facts to give you an ultimate answer. But yes, if, you know, this document says that the district will provide a new central library. It doesn't say where that library will, you know, doesn't say the exact address of that library. So if that particular plan that you had had is not available, then you could find another space for a library still be in compliance with this document.
How about the number of facilities built using these bond funds? Can we use the bond funds to build additional facilities outside the scope of the description?
That's a great question. So, you know, what I'll do is point you directly to can you hear me? I think there might be others that are not muted.
I think we're all muted.
Okay. So so it said, so the ballot title says, if approved, this measure would finance capital costs, including, and it lists specific projects. So if the district is able to finance those projects listed, which is a new central library, a new Redmond library, and then repair, modernize, and upgrade Sisters, Sun River, Lapine, Downtown, and East Bend libraries, then if there is remaining authority under this initial catchall, which says if approved, this measure would finance capital costs to finance additional projects so long as they renovate, upgrade, construct, and library.
Say that again, please?
Sure. So you have this language that allows you to spend money on projects in addition to those that are specifically listed in the bullets. And that language is the sort of introduction to the bullet, which says, if approved, this measure would finance capital costs. So you can finance other capital costs related to library facilities so long as you have met the requirements in the bullets.
So as long as we do the projects listed, then if there's money left over, we could do additional projects.
Exactly.
Could you talk a little bit about the the 85% rule and what that means for us, especially with the project that's now delayed?
Sure. Yeah, so just for those who aren't, you know, staff, Todd and others at the district, in addition to, you know, being bound by this ballot title, have been bound and in the weeds on a lot of other legal issues. So when a local government borrows in the public markets, there's a requirement to provide continuing disclosure to investors. That's the requirement that they're subject to and have been learning about. Also, in order to get the best interest rates for your property taxpayers, these bonds were issued on a tax-exempt basis. And one of the requirements to enable the district to issue on a tax-exempt basis under the Internal Revenue Code is for the district to have reasonably expected to spend 85% of the proceeds within three years. And you can imagine why that requirement exists because the IRS doesn't want governments to borrow money that they don't need right away, right? They don't want these tax-exempt securities in the marketplace if they don't need to be there. As we discussed with Todd earlier, while that is a requirement in the Internal Revenue Code, it is something that is also subject to change circumstances. So as long as the district had reasonably expected to spend 85% on the day of closing, the district can stray from that and if there are changed circumstances. So they won't blow the test just because they're not able to make the expenditure. And as we told Todd, we recommend writing a note to the file just to document what has changed between the date of closing and now that may keep the district from spending the 85% as they had anticipated.
What are the consequences if you don't expend it all? And you said the limit is five years?
It's 85% for three years. The test is based on a reasonable expectation at the time of closing. So so long as the district had a reasonable expectation at the time of closing and documents, a change in circumstances that have prevented the district from actually making the expenditure, there is no consequence.
So we, there's no, there's no consequences within the five-year period? Or what if we just didn't spend the money? There would be consequences, right?
Oh, sure. This is my statement was only about one particular test, an internal revenue code. Yeah.
So what constraints would we have? So we issue a note to the file. We say circumstances have changed. Where does that put us? How, how long can we delay?
So you can delay so long as is reasonable. I mean, these are public funds and you're required to use them prudently. So as long as you are working towards meeting the obligations in the ballot title, I would not let that particular test in the Internal Revenue Code dictate, you know, your choices.
So once we put a note in the file that circumstances have changed, does the three years start over at that point?
That's a great point, Bunny. Great question. No, this is, this is really a snapshot test. So on the date of closing, did Todd expect to spend 85% in three years? And if he did, and if that was a reasonable expectation, you have met that requirement.
Okay.
Well, let me clarify. You're saying as, as of the date of closing, that is not necessarily the three years?
The test is on the date of closing, did the district reasonably expect to spend 85% of the proceeds within three years of that date?
Closing of the bond offering.
That's right.
So it's been said that if we don't spend the bond funds within five years, we have to give them back. That's not a true statement, is it? I don't know where that's been said. It's in the newspaper. By who? Well, is that a true statement or not? Do we ever we ever
I'm not familiar with that particular rule. I'm not sure. There might be something that I don't know about.
Are there any circumstances in which we have to give back the bond funds?
Well, I would say that I have seen governments consider using the bond funds to pay off the bond where it's an impossibility to build a project.
And if we have bond proceeds left over, what can we, can we use those bond proceeds to pay off the interest on the bonds? what can we, can we use those bond proceeds to pay off the interest on the bonds?
Yes. So if you have bond, so bond proceeds must be paid for capital costs of projects described in the ballot title. If there are remaining bond proceeds at the end of the project, you know, once the projects are built, then, yes, you should use them to pay the debt service on the bonds. And there are some specific rules in the tax code about how that's done and how those funds are invested. So we'll want to get our tax lawyer involved just to make sure that we're meeting all those requirements.
Thank you. And can you go over the arbitrage rules?
You know, I, so I am a bond, I am your bond lawyer, and I focus on state law and federal tax law. And my, I have a partner who does all of the tax work. And I can pop in to see if she's here to talk about the arbitrage requirements. But if she's not, we can certainly set up another time for her to go through those with you.
Okay, because my understanding from, from SDAO, and I think you probably know David Olbrich.
I do know David Olbrich very well.
My conversations I've had with him is, he said, we have every five years, we have to do an accounting to the IRS for any profits that we accrue from our investments over and above the interest that we're paying the bond investors. And after five years, we have to return that profit to the IRS.
That's right. So that, I can certainly talk at that level, which is the basic rule is, you know, from a policy standpoint, the IRS doesn't want local governments to borrow and then invest the proceeds in a way that allows them to make a profit, right? So you can't, you can't invest above the yield on the bond and then keep that. There's a requirement to rebate that to IRS. The reason why I'm hedging is because there's a lot of nuances in that language and exceptions and timing considerations. And so when the time comes, then the district is actually set up. You have an entity onboard. It's the tax folks at our law firm are onboard to run your arbitrage and rebate calculations at that five-year mark. So you have that sort of already established.
So if we feel we are going to overrun the five-year arbitrage rule, is it more advantageous to us to actually engage an arbitrage firm now so they can keep up with our investments and accounting, rather than waiting till after five years where they have to go back and look at the first, everything up to that point?
Well, I think.
And we, we have them onboard.
I'm a little confused about this arbitrage question, Ray. Where are you going with that? Why are you asking that particular question? Are you thinking we'll have funds left over, which, given this backlash, I think we'll use more funds? So why do you think we'll have funds left over?
Why not? I mean, we have options open to us here. If we have options coming up that would leave funds left over, I think that would be something to consider positively. Or are you saying we should spend everything we've got, no matter what?
I'm not saying we should spend everything we've got, but it looks to me like we probably will, given this back step that we've had to take. And so I don't know why you think we're going to have funding left over or we need to bring someone in at this point to talk about it. Is there some other reason?
What are you, why do you ask that question?
Because I asked you, I asked you that question. I don't understand why you ask about arbitrage and why you don't think we'll spend these funds, and if there's something else that we should be looking at. I asked you the question.
I asked the attorney, if we have funds left over, what can we do with them? You don't want to know what would happen if we have funds left over. You can't sit on them. That's illegal. One of the things we could do with it, because I've been on other boards where we had money left over, is to pay off the interest. And I want to make sure this accounts, this applies here also to our tax-exempt Joe bonds, Joe bonds.
Okay, I, I think that where we were heading is to try and figure out what we need to do given this back step and go forward, not think about, well, what do we do if we have funds left over? I think that's superfluous at this point.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think we need to discuss things that are going to move us forward. That's what I would prefer. Yeah, and, and I am confused about do these arbitrage requirements? So if we're in the, if we're in the middle of this project, if we have not yet spent all of the bond funds, do these arbitrage requirements kick in regarding the interest that we are earning on the bond money? So for instance, if we were getting 5% and the, the the interest, the interest rate was a percent and a half, say, would we have to give back that excess at five years if, if we have not spent all the bond money? Because what I'm looking at is, so we have, we're accruing interest, but, but costs, as, as we have been delayed, are also increasing exponentially. So are we progressively losing ground because we are having to give that additional interest back? I'm not talking about at the end of the project. I'm talking about during the project at the five-year point. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I think for purpose, your planning, you should plan on just using the principal amount that you received for the project and not relying on the interest earnings above the bond yield.
I think Ann's question, the way I understand it, would be, correct me if I'm wrong, the interest that we're accruing between now, when the bond offering occurred, the closing, and the five-year period. If we have to go into arbitrage at, at five years, say year six, do we also have to refund all the interest that we accrued, profit from the interest we accrued in the first five years?
You know, like I said, there's a lot of nuance, and these rules are not straightforward. There, there, there are different rules for different kinds of entities, depending on how much money you've borrowed. So I can't speak to the details now, but I can certainly get you in touch with the tax lawyer to go through all of those nuances and how they would affect your interest.
I think that would be helpful. I think that's information that we should probably have, that we should have. So switching gears, if we were to proceed with construction as outlined in the ballot title, and we were not able to accomplish the entirety of the project, so for instance, if we could do everything but build the central library, where would that put us as far as expenditure of the bond funds? Can? Yeah.
You know, what I would say is that, and I'm going to just put this in my very basic terms, right, which is, as a voter, when I'm voting in my district, when I look at a ballot title, I am relying on what I've been told the projects will be. And so here, the central library is the, the set, the central project. It's the first project on the list. It's the top project. So I think there's a risk if you decide to do projects other than that one. That said, if you don't have as much money as you need to do all of the projects you anticipated initially, you could certainly create a central library that's slightly less expensive than the one that you had anticipated, or a Redmond library that's slightly less expensive, or, you know, fewer repairs and modernizations to the other libraries. But the contract is that you have agreed to provide those items. They don't necessarily need to be exactly in the form that you had originally anticipated to be, you would be able to provide them. But you do have to provide these things that are bulleted.
So just to be certain on this, from the language of the measure, the auction measure, we don't state the size of the central library, the location of the central library. What do we state in the measure that defines it as a central library?
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly the, that's the core question, right? So what I would do there in order to interpret this language is, one, there's always the reasonable test and the sort of, what is your relationship to your electors test, right? You want to do some, you want to be able to deliver a library of the type that a voter would have anticipated. So, you know, not being a library person myself, I'm, I don't, just a layperson, when I hear the term central library, that seems like an important one, right? That's not like a, like an outhouse-sized thing. That's something that's, you know, significant. It's bigger than the other libraries. That's what I would think as a voter. And then the other thing that I think that you could get some context around, what does that, what should that central library look like, is by looking at the secondary materials that were presented to voters. So what did you say in your explanatory statement? Was there any more detail? You know, what did you, you know, what were their other informational meetings? So I would look to those kinds of sources to inform what voters had anticipated you would provide for them.
That would be what they felt they should be, would be provided to them before the election or also after the election?
I mean, that's a great question. I think that most of, you know, you are relying on the vote, and they only have the information before the election. So that's where I would start my analysis. Information that came after the election, they didn't make, that couldn't.
But can you repeat that last part again? You thought it ended up?
Information that came after the election would not have been able to inform their vote.
So do we, the way I'm interpreting what you're talking about now, do we need to balance out not only what it says in the ballot, but also the information that we were giving to our voters prior to the election? So with all of our, the meetings that went out into the community, where county members come in and look and see at what we were proposing, on all the different times that we had things written up that we're talking about what we were proposing, do we balance those two things together to help us decide what we were informing our voters with?
So this document is the central document. If there's no ambiguity in the document, you just look at this document. But since we got, since I just got the question about what is a central library? If there's a question amongst you about what a central library is, then we look to, in, you know, in the legal terms, we refer to it as legislative history. So what were the other things that would have informed what folks were thinking at the time? But certainly, if, you know, if, if there's no question about what a new Redmond library expected to significantly increase square footage means, then you don't have to think about those secondary sources.
Right.
And do we have that? I know there's a voter's pamphlet that comes with your ballot. Todd, do we have the exact language that was put into that as a starting place? I know we had a lot of meetings beforehand, but what went in and out to the voters?
Well, one, we can easily get to everything that was in the voter's pamphlet. That's right on the county clerk's website. We could also share with you all the, basically, bond promotional material that we put out describing what we were trying to accomplish this month.
I think it would be beneficial to have that information.
So that includes information on the website, rec mail, interviews.
Prior to the election.
Prior to the election. Yeah. So, and, and I think the, the central, in the voter's pamphlet, what, we need to have that information as well, but I think most of that was the ballot type. I mean, that's, that's what the centerpiece of that material was, but then it was supplemental material. So, yeah, if you could pull all that together, Todd.
Let me ask you another question. On the second bullet for the summary, it says, provide a new Redmond library expected to significantly increase square footage. That's reasonably vague enough that we could either build the new central library on the site of the central, of the Redmond library. We would demolish the Redmond library and build a new one on its present site. Or it could also mean that we build another library or Redmond. Is that correct? A new Redmond library expected to significantly increase square footage just means we could build another library.
It says a new Redmond.
A new one. It said the new. A new library in Redmond. Would you interpret that? Vague enough to say we could build another library, keep the one that's existing and build another library.
There, there are these, these like concepts to, for, and, you know, one of them is that work matters. And so this is my preliminary reaction to that would be that if that had been the goal to communicate, then there wouldn't be two different bullets. You know, it could be, provide a new library in Redmond or something like that. But the fact that it's split up seems to indicate that the goal was to have two separate sites.
Okay. Thank you.
That, and then I think, would you want to look at this, since that's some confusion, if we look at our materials that we posted, we're pretty clear about what we're, we didn't say we're going to have two libraries in Redmond.
Right.
So we didn't say that we would not have two libraries.
No, we said, this is what we're going to use the money for.
A new library in Redmond.
On the site of the current library.
So I guess that would be. So that would be a question is if, what we stated was that we would significantly increase the size of the Redmond library. At no point did we put anything out there that said we would have two libraries. So at what point would you weigh in on the secondary material to look at that? Because right now, we're, we've, we've just had an argument that says we can do a second building, so. If you look, so at what point would you be looking at secondary material to check on that?
So I will say that, just to sort of orient us, you all are the ones, unfortunately, that are on the front lines with this, right? So if there is a challenge, Todd, it's your name that will be on that challenge. And, and board members, it is your names that will be on those challenges. So I, I say this because you can ask me what my interpretation would be of this language, but at the end of the day, you all need to be comfortable too, right? So Todd, based on what I have heard today, I would say. I would say that this is a good time to look at those secondary materials. If you all think there's a reasonable different interpretation. The way that I, you know, look at this ballot title is that as a voter, I think I would have been promised that there would be a central library and then a Redmond library and then improvements to these other libraries. That doesn't mean that there can't be an additional library in Redmond built if there's additional funds. But, um, that, that's what the language appears to say to me, but again, you all may, may see it differently. So this is not, um, I hate to pile on, but you know, one of these statutes that's in your file is about personal liability for expenditure of bond proceeds that's outside of bond authorization. And, um, and I know that you all are, I'm sure, very aware of your responsibilities as board members, as staff members, but I feel like it's important to point that out, um, statute, because that's something that's very significant. And so, um, just to be mindful as we're, you know, thinking about how to proceed.
So in the bond pamphlet, it specifically states, "The bond funds would also pay to significantly increase the size of the existing Redmond library to provide for children's discovery and learning spaces, flexible meeting, tutoring and creative spaces, and an expanded materials and book collection." Would that seem to indicate to you, and that was in the bond pamphlet, that seems to indicate to me that we are very specific about, uh, not creating a second library?
That, that certainly sounds like there was a plan for a library in Redmond, yeah.
Could you just elaborate on, um, uh, Todd and board members, responsibilities that you were just talking about, uh, in the expenditures of this funding? And, um, what, what is our responsibility to ensure this money is spent in the manner that was projected to the voters?
So, um, the, the requirement in the law is that, just like with any other public funds, it'd only be expended for the purposes for which it was authorized. And so just a really basic element of that would be your library district, you receive a permanent rate. You know, you, you couldn't, if you voted, you could use your permanent rate to finance hot tubs for yourselves. You know, that's not authorized, right? So, um, there is a very obvious example. In this case, we have this ballot title and we have case law that says that proceeds of bonds must only be used as outlined in the ballot title. And so, um, you know, there's not a lot of, of course, every ballot title is different, but this is, that's basically the overarching principle is that, um, you only have this money, these bond proceeds, because you have asked the voters for authority to tax them in addition to the existing taxes. And the contract with them is you will pay these additional taxes and we will do these projects that are outlined here. So I think that's important to keep as your, sort of your, um, you know, big picture direction as we're moving forward. This is not like a situation where you get your permanent rate taxes every November and you can decide, you know, how best to allocate them for projects, for staff, et cetera, given the mission of the library. This is like, these are constitutionally dedicated funds and they're dedicated to the purposes in the ballot title.
Okay, so each board member though is responsible for adhering to that bond issue. Am I understanding that correctly?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think that that's, I think every board member, every staff member, anyone who has anything to do with this transaction, the law requires that the trans, the funds only be used for purposes in the ballot title.
Okay, thank you.
So a large part of the interpretation of, if there's any ambiguity on the bond title and the summary is what the board members, how the board members interpret that document? And also how the public interpreted that document prior to the election?
I would say that the language is what a reasonable voter would have taken from this ballot title. Um, and to the extent there's an ambiguity in the ballot title, then you look to the secondary materials, to the explanatory statements, and then the other materials that the district had provided. I, I also feel the need to, um, to point out at this point that there is a statute that authorizes expenditures of, um, proceeds to be validated by a court. So if there's a question about whether or not it may be authorized, you can seek a validation from a court on your expenditure. Um, that is, you know, can be, you know, obviously you need to pay a litigator to prepare those materials and to, to file that suit and to go through that process. But, um, that could be a way that you all resolve questions. And of course, with the risk that it may come out differently than you anticipate, right? It could be, no, this is not validated, that's not a valid expenditure. You're kind of stuck with what you get.
So do we have any additional questions at this point?
One that's wrong, since we, since there's a possibility we need to look for new land for the central library. If it happened to be on the east side of Ben and we realized, that would be duplication of effort to build that and remodel the East Bend library because it would basically be supplanting that library. How do we stand since in the bond language it said we'd be remodeling the East Bend library? Would we have an argument to say, uh, that's changed, changed that issue? We no longer need to do that library?
Is this one for me, Todd?
So basically, if, if, if based on where we had to move the central library, if it turned out that made the need for, uh, our current East Bend library obsolete, would we be okay based on the bond language to, to do that? Since in the bond language it says we would upgrade the East Bend library.
You know, I, you know, this is all, my lawyer, lawyerly caveat is these are all very fact specific. But when I hear that question, Todd, I feel like it's kind of a similar analysis to the one we just had with Redmond, right? Which is the, the ballot title says you'll repair, modernize and upgrade the East Bend library. And that you will provide a new central library. It doesn't assume that they're the same thing. So I think they're, um, in order to, you know, if you're going to honor the ballot title, the thing to do would be to have the, the two separate facilities. But, you know, if, you know, like we've talked about, if the world has changed and that's impossible or, you know, it doesn't serve the needs of your folks, certainly you can, um, that might be the kind of thing that you can seek a validation for, to see what, what a court would say.
Of course, that we could build a central library on the east side and then at a later date, close the East Bend library. It's not precluded by this bond measure.
Can you, can you repeat that?
So we could build and provide a new central library, say on the east side of town as Todd suggested it might happen. And then at a later date, we close the East Bend library. And that's not precluded by the bond measure.
Would you have already used bond proceeds to repair, modernize and upgrade the East Bend library?
We would already do that. In addition, as part of the thing, who I mean, says, doesn't say how much we have to spend and how we modernize or repair or whatever. It could just mean a quart of paint. That would be the, well, that would be considered normal maintenance, but if we did something that was not considered normal maintenance, but would be modernizing it or, or upgrading it, the East Bend library. Once we build the central library on the east side, a year later, we could close the East Bend library, the least, East Bend library.
Waste taxpayers' money to upgrade and maybe spend all the money in the East Bend library just to close it a couple of years later.
I think that's open to discussion. We spent $10 on the East Bend library upgrade.
And, and I know, I'm sure you, you, but what's happening with this discussion is that, you know, it's pointing out that there's a few governing, uh, principles here, right? There's the law, there's what does the ballot title say? And then there's what all do you think is the best policy as well? So that's why I'm glad I've got an elected board member.
Any other questions? Okay, um, thank you for your time. Uh, this has been really informative and it's, um, provided some good information for us as far as what our, our constraints are and what our opportunities are. So Todd, I think getting some information on the arbitrage situation would be helpful for future meetings. So thank you very much for your time and for your perseverance in connecting.
Thanks all, I'm glad it worked and, um, best wishes and I'm hoping to visit these libraries.
Okay, um, so our next, do we need a break or, or are we good for now? Okay, um, okay, so the next thing that I thought we could do is just go around and summarize what our thoughts are on this. How the proceeds of the bond should be used and what your preferred path forward is. Also, any questions or concerns that you have? And, and, uh, I think it's, I think that this is an important starting point to productive discussion among the board members. So I would ask each of you to be transparent, specific, and really say what's on your mind. So I'm not and, and be solutions based. So I want to, I want to hear how you think we should proceed. So I'll start at the end, Anne?
Well, I'd like to ask a question first. Just for my clarification and for background information. What discussion happened around the contingency if the city council didn't pass? Cause it seemed like that was a kind of moving forward was predicated on that. So as this plan was developed, were there contingencies talked about if, for some reason, we hit this, which we did, we hit this red box? What were some of those contingencies or thoughts around that?
And I'm, I'm just to, you agree your asking the board?
Or, yes.
Well, I think, but we also have the owner's rep and the library team, which had discussions.
If I can have the answer, I just want to make sure.
Um, actually the, the whole team, because you guys were very instrumental.
Our contingency would base on, well, we knew we had three paths. One, to do, for the city to do an area plan. Two, to do a master plan along with the neighbors. And three, uh, the route with the text menu. And then the, then the fourth option, which is, and all three of those, well, one of those is obviously gone. So that, that leaves two others still. They may not be great routes, uh, but those are still two routes we could take. And the third one is to abandon the property and find a new location. So that's, that those, those are the routes that are there and, you know, are current routes at this point. Point out that, um, we have been in talks with the neighbors. They're very concerned about, um, the, basically the IRS changes that may happen to them if they go into master planning with us. It's, it's a private, uh, privately owned by a family and, um, they have been advised not to move forward with that. So that's, that's not looking like a strong option for us. It's one we'd still like to pursue if possible, but, um, the next one is the city and doing the area plan. That is one that is not on their docket or schedule at this point. They have talked about that being anywhere from five to 10 years out from the resident, could be as much as 15. So that is also one that is not looking like a great option. And then your other option is to look for new land, uh, somewhere else. Either, well, look for new land, another location that would be determined by the board.
My recollection as, um, years back, as we were moving through this, the initial planning was all with the city, not city council, but the city planners, correct? And I remember having a couple of them come to our meetings and the city planners or the city government, I guess, they were encouraging of what we were doing. This, that was my interpretation when we were meeting with them. And so I have to admit, when it came down to, when we were probably a couple of months out from meeting with the city council, I was shocked that it looked like there was opposition on the city council because it seemed like the city government itself had been encouraging this. Am I, is my interpretation wrong or is that?
We were working closely with city staff, but it's just like, just like our own board. If somebody was working closely with the library staff, it's still up to the, the board to make final decisions. And so they can't dictate what the city council
Right, but, but you would think they had been working in conjunction with them. I mean, I don't remember hearing from the city staff, you know, you're going to end up having a problem with the city council. Did we?
They would never say that.
They would never say that.
Yeah.
Just like our staff would never say.
But why would they encourage us? If they knew we were going to have a roadblock with the city council? That doesn't make any sense.
I don't, I think, I mean, looking back on the history, you know, we did do substantial due diligence on this property before we purchased it. So we made the offer based on the due diligence process and we even extended the due diligence process in order to get the information that we needed to decide whether or not this was a wise purchase. So in working with land use consultants and staff, I think they all indicated that there was precedence for this type of request and that this was a reasonable request. Yeah, and so I think that's what you know, that based on city council's past actions, based on the reasonableness of the request, there was no reason to anticipate that this would not be approved. And these are from people that deal with the city on landings matters all the time. I mean, they have more experience probably than any other landings planning consultants in this region. So based on all of that knowledge, this, this appeared a reasonable path forward.
Let me, let me just say, I, I have a different interpretation of what we're told. That is, we were told, yes, this piece of property is outside the UGB, it's outside the city limits. It would require an amendment to the comprehensive plan in order for the city to annex it in.
Right.
Individually. And the reason we're expecting them to do that is because of the, the exception they got, the text amendment that this school board received. For what is you created the name of the elementary school? What was it, Greg?
North Star.
North Star. And then it was, it was a shock to me from everything I heard from the information we were given by our consultants, the staff, everyone, that the reason the school board got an exception for North Star was not because they had a text amendment. The city attorney said, I think I've written this, is that the time they applied for that exception or replied for the annexation for the school was because the rules had not been put in place yet. Comprehensive plan was being developed, and so they put it into the comprehensive plan as part of the language, not as an exception to the language. And it was stated for that school only. You are correct. And so the information we were given was partially true in that we would have to ask for a text amendment. It was incorrect to say we would get it because the school district already got it and the city council was doing this as part of their usual policy. We had no reason to say we would be getting it just because we're an agency or the school district got exception also. But we should have gone into this knowing that, yeah, we have to meet the requirements of what the city council felt were substantial reasons to give us a positive funding. I think that's, we misinterpreted what we were told.
You're correct about the fact that they didn't get an exception. It was written in. I think we were using the that we could use that as a precedent of if they were accepting schools, set ourselves as a public benefit. I will say that at the time we did this, we also knew that it was a new city council and there was no history about which way they would go. And that, that was always going to be a challenge for us because we did not know that we didn't have any history to know what they would traditionally do. And so that was that was always.
That was always.
Right, and I think, I mean, I think if it had just been, I agree with what you're saying, but if it had just been us going off and deciding this, that would have been one thing, but city staff was also telling us that it was reasonable. Except, you know, it's.
No, they can't say that. What they were saying was the process we were using was correct.
If the city can't, this city staff never gave us a discouraging, I never felt that they ever discouraged us from moving forward.
They wouldn't. Why would they? They would not be able to speak with city council or planning.
Well, I know, but they, but if they thought it was unreasonable, they would have said, there's no, you know, this isn't a viable option. You shouldn't be pursuing this. But instead, we were actually, you know, they, they presented that as an option.
It's always been an option. But they can't tell you, they never would, they never came back to us and said, even for our representatives, that, yeah, the city council either is going to send up the roadblocks or the city council isn't.
Yeah, well, no, they would never, they never said what the council was going to do, but they said as, as professional planners, they thought it was reasonable. And that's where they, they recommended approval of that application.
No, the staff didn't, the planning commission didn't.
No, the staff also recommended.
It might, it might be helpful, maybe, you know, because Greg was involved and, and Mark Maces were involved in many of those discussions as we were starting. Maybe if you recall. Yeah, you know, as we had those discussions, we had a lot of in-depth discussions with all of the planning staff and, you know, it was at the planner level. It was at the management level of planning group. We went through in our entire tax amendment process, how we wrote the document, what we were asking, was very in-depthly reviewed and discussed with the city staff. They gave us comments on our actual writings. They requested we actually make changes. They requested that we make edits to incorporate the schools, not just at our site, but broadly, because one of the things they determined was that there was a component of their comprehensive plan that did not address sites outside of North Star. And they wanted to allow school districts to have that right to build other elementary schools using the text amendment other places throughout the community. So they were very much involved in how we were presenting the text amendment to the city, whether that was to staff, to planning commission, and ultimately to the city council. They don't approve that text amendment. That is a recommendation by planning commission and then it's a vote by city council. But staff at its highest levels knew what we were proposing.
Of course.
And they supported that and they reviewed our language prior to our submission of the entire package. So that what we were requesting, they felt was consistent with what had been granted before and what is within the, what they thought would be acceptable to the city. They did not speak for the city council. I agree with what you said. But I would say that I think that staff very much was actively involved in understanding what we were requesting and telling to us how we should request that, based on what their recommendations were and their requirements. So, you know, I think that they were actively involved in supporting our approach. And this was something that went on from early on in the process. We started our engagement with the city probably shortly after the sale of the bonds in May. We had some of our very first kickoff meetings with city and with Brooks Resources ourselves. And that continued on a monthly basis all the way up until we just recently stopped meeting with them here in the last two weeks. But throughout the last year, that process has been an active engagement throughout between us and city staff.
Well, and we also were in, in, in-depth conversations before we bought the property. So I mean, it's been way longer than a year. It's been more than two years. But, I mean, regardless of all of that, that's in the past. So what, where do we stand now today? I think that's the question that we have a forest rather than what was and wasn't done previously. So, so I'd like to, I'd like to proceed with this board call and and have each of us describe where we stand on this project and what we see, what, how we want to move forward. So Anne?
My vision overall has been really growing and supporting our neighborhood libraries. And then I ran through the position. I really wanted to be able to revisit the budget plan to really look at, are we doing as much possible for neighborhood libraries to bring them up to, as it says in, in the voter's pamphlet, to increase space for community use, children's library learning and programs in the event. So my focus has always been on doing as much possible for our neighborhood libraries. And I'm going to continue with that vision. And I'm, I'm thinking as we're moving forward, our budget allocations will change, you know? And so I'm hoping that we don't decrease our budgets for those neighborhood libraries. If anything, I'd like to see it bumped up a little bit. We've had some preliminary discussion above the board about the need for a permanent East Bend Library, what that would look like. Do we want to continue to invest money into our leased space when that area is growing? So that is one, one project or one question I'd like to, to talk about within the scope of this one, yes. And then also, you know, it, the, the, the property that we have is, is, doesn't look like it will be viable as far as looking at trying to do a master plan or an area plan. So maybe looking at property somewhere else to build the, the central library. But really, my focus will continue to be on developing, growing, supporting our neighborhood libraries to the maximum. So what does that look like? We're looking at our budget. So right now, we've got what, 2% allocated to our neighborhood libraries. The majority of the budget is going towards building the central library and the Redmond library. What can we do to really look at increasing the budget footprints for, for our, our community libraries? And then really looking at what is, what is the need on the East Bend for permanent library or, you know, are we going to continue to invest money in that leased space?
When you talk about increasing the budget footprint, do you, are you talking about in addition to additional money, are you talking about increasing the size of those branches, if at all possible? Or what is that based on?
Discussions with community members. They were saying when they, when they looked at the bond, they really thought that some of our, our neighborhood libraries would be expanded. We've got increased growth throughout the county, not just, you know, in Bend. So La Pine has three new housing developments. They anticipate having 10,000 new homes within the next 10 years. So maybe really looking at, can we increase that footprint? Because this is a bond that will, that will last for the next 20, 30 years. So this is our opportunity to really invest in and build in our community libraries. We won't have this opportunity again for quite some time.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, so what is your, okay, you said something about a central library. So what's your perception of what a central library would include?
I don't think, to be very honest, I, I thought that the, the design of the central library was overpowering. It was overpowering the needs of the rest of the, the library system. So there was a lot of discussion, you know, in, in the community groups that, that I interact with. Do we need more neighborhood libraries?
But, but I want to talk about the central. Do you see that there is a need for the central library?
I do see a need for another library, yes, but I don't think I need to, that I see the, the, the need for as large a library as was proposed. Do, do you understand that if we were to have all of the equipment placed in the central library for redistributing the books, checking them in, checking them out, that that is beneficial to the community libraries? Do you see that as a benefit?
Cynthia, that might be something you want to address when you're giving your perspective on this.
Okay, I just, I was just, I just wanted to understand, because Anne did say that, you know, she saw a central library. I just was wondering, I, I guess I need to know what it is you perceive as a central library? Or a near-per central library.
Right, it's a fair question, but I, I've been also asked by members of the community, do we need to have all operations in the central library? Could we have the distribution of things in another spot? Does IT, I know we need to have two different spots for IT, but, you know, does it all need to be in one? One location?
It'd be really expensive to put it in all the libraries.
Right. I just, I just, I just want to know where you're coming from. All right, Cynthia, do you want to go?
Well. Okay. Basically, what we proposed in the bond is what I wanted to see happen. So since obviously the central library in the place where we wanted isn't going to happen, so I'm hoping that I'm hoping that what, what we can do is have a central library that's in a different location. I do see the need for a location to have a large community center. We don't really have a large community center in Deschutes County. And there are plenty of times when we've brought authors to come and speak. There are a lot of the different events that the library can use. It's a, it's a, would be a, a place where a lot of different community, community organizations could use. I personally think that having seen the equipment when, when we went to the, back to Washington DC, the necess, I see it's really necessary to have the majority of that equipment be in one building. It's going to make it so much more streamlined. Plus, I think it would be an extreme expense to put all the different, it, to put that equipment in all, in the individual libraries. I do see that it's important for an East Bend library. I personally would like to see us in the future find a permanent location for the East Bend library rather than renting. However, I don't see a need to increase the footprints of the libraries based on all of the research that the, when we have the, the development team come in and analyze each of the libraries, each of the communities' needs, how, how fast they're growing. They basically came back and said that the footprint that is, is there now is fine. It meets those community needs. It meets the, the growth for those communities. However, they did need to be modernized. And so I, I think that that's exactly what needs to happen. I do think that Redmond is a quickly growing community. It's grown a lot in the last. I do think that Redmond is a quickly growing community. It's grown a lot in the last decade. And so the fact that we're planning on putting a much larger library on this location, I think is very beneficial to the community. It needs to take place. Something else that you asked that I haven't addressed?
Well, no, just what questions, questions or concerns you have?
Questions that I have? Well, I I I'm assuming you're going to address eventually. I'm assuming that our realtor is looking for properties that we can utilize for a time. For a central library, so. I can't stand listening to myself. I need to hear you.
When you said putting all equipment in each one of the libraries, what what specific equipment are you talking about?
The for bringing the books in for reestablish for the books, for the RFID program. So so when the books are checked in and when they're checked back out and sending them to the different libraries.
You don't think we should have that at each branch?
No, I don't. I think that I think that it'd be cost prohibitive. Number one, I get as many, when I check books out from the library, I get is I don't just get books from the Redmond library. I get books that come from the pine. I get books that come from Sisters. And so to have all of that in one central location makes far more sense to me.
Well, let me get through. Then you're saying you have to return the books. So that's a new location or you're. So you return the books to the Redmond branch? They get processed through. The Redmond branch.
But they're going to be processed much faster. When they go through the the cent- they go through that, all the books are then sent to the central library. They're all going to get processed through and sent back out distributed much faster.
Okay, so you're imagining they're just going to go in in Redmond and the whole thing gets shipped off to the central library. For rechecking in and then check out and then ship back out again. So what happened to the idea that we would have our circulate our floating collection?
That's.
You you return it to Redmond. It stays in Redmond. Because sooner or later, the Redmond community would have the types of books that they like as opposed to the types that.
I can't address that. Maybe maybe before you get into the weeds of how this is going to work. It's just it is the support for all of our libraries comes with the efficiencies we gain. In a central location. It's just um, so I think before you get into the weeds of how they will work. And and the it's it's a lot of things all tied together. It's automated handling system. It's where the largest chunk of circulation happens, which is our Ben who's and Redmond Center. So that is where we have our our biggest chunk of of circulation. And we'll remind you, even with COVID, our circulation is increasing. District wise, we need two million downtown Ben alone does one million in circulation highlights. Okay, so um anyway, not to get into the weeds any more than that. But it is a system where we have the automated handling. We look at our courier, we look at holding collections. And we're also looking at our reclassification project that we're moving into this year too of how we are increasing the accessibility and circulation in all of our resources. So um. Anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I think the design of the system is.
Yeah, but that comes as a result of how the board decides they would like to have their community. Whether there should be community libraries with a centralized library, then you make the function for it in that. That becomes part of the operations internal to the library. The board is concerned with should be with how we're serving the public.
And that's and that, thank you, Ray. I think what I'm hoping to get out of this is what direction do you want to go?
Right. We're serving our public.
Yes, so I. We can give you facts all day long about things, but we need to know. I need directions from the board. So I need to know where each of you are.
Right, so we really don't want to get into the weeds, as you're saying. And we don't want to make that a major part of how we perceive the library should receive. And serve the public. You can make it work. It may cost us more, it may cost us less.
I I just say, let's not put words in his mouth. I I really think I need to know what direction do you want to go? What's your plan? We are we are now at this crossroads. Each of you, where would you like us to go?
Okay, so Ray, do you want to go?
Sure. Well, first of all, after listening to our bond attorney. clarify a lot of issues that have been floating around on this. Man of the central library, it's a true the bonds. It seems to me, correct me if I'm wrong. And when we say central library. We see neither the size nor the location of the central library. How we define a central library, she says, how we define the central library. Also, how the public would receive the central library. So she said, it's not going to be one of these uh. Outhouse libraries. So size is not consideration for my mind for central library. The main concern, main issue I think that faces the board is. What is the future of the library? And we're opposed pandemic. We don't live in a vacuum. The libraries, the way we have. Since the district started. We've transitioned from a library of a classical library system, where people come to the library or the reference librarian. They ask questions, we give them answers, we give them books. That changed rather quickly. As we got rid of the reference librarian. We said, we're outward looking library. Then we said, we're not only outward looking to serve the public within the library, we're outward looking to serve the public outside the library. We then went and said, the library is not the books in the structure. It's the people who work in the library and how we interact with our community. Why should the public care that there's a public library? And it's not the same old reason. Libraries are absolutely essential. To the last bastion of democracy, small D. Everything now has changed because of pandemic. If you're saying the only good thing that came out of this pandemic was that it brought the future into yesterday. The role of technology. Zoom has become, I don't know, it's like Google, it's not only now, but it's also a verb. It's a way of life. This is not going to change. We have to take that into account when we look at our library system. How would we serve the public? Remember, we serve the public. What they want, where they want, when they want. My philosophy is, we libraries, like the AL license, libraries build community. Communities don't build the libraries because they're just like building the library building. The library is not necessarily the building itself or the size and the structure or how it works. We have to now decide as a board, what is the role and the future of the library? My family is, we put a hundred and twenty million dollars, however many millions of dollars, into one centralized library. We are looking at a library system that comes from the nineteen. Nineties, nineteen eighties, nineteen seventy. That's how I laugh at this. When I look at central libraries. They're in cities or municipalities that have centralized services. We don't have that. We don't have the infrastructure of transportation. We don't have the infrastructure for reducing our carbon footprint. And we are facing global warming. We don't live in a vacuum as a library. We fit into the community. And if we don't listen to what the communities, if we don't look to see where the communities are going. Then we're going to find that we're on the wrong side of history. And I just don't want our library system to be one of the best in the state. Soon as becoming one of the most backward in the state. So I think what we need to do is not debate whether we want a large central library, where do we want to have it located? Or do we want to have community libraries? How small or big should they be and where should they be located? Our first question really is. What's the future of this library? We have not discussed. The role of the library has changed. You may laugh. When I ask the tech question of where is technology, how does technology impact the library and its services? The answer I got from the board was, will technology always have an effect? Let's look to see what's actually real right now. Businesses are changing the way they function. People are going to read telecommunion. They're not going to be going. People are reading more ebooks. They're downloading more audio books. How does that affect how we provide the services? And what do our physical structures look like? They need to be. We have gone, I think, a little bit overboard in saying that the libraries are. Community centers. I think what we should be looking at is saying the libraries are the centers of the community. Does not necessarily mean we have huge event center, event spaces. After all, I look at this and I'm told we need more space for our large events. Of the author. Novel idea. We have to remind ourselves, those are not library events, those are library foundation events. These are our role to build a structure for another Bible C three, C three, or another nonprofit organization. We should be building in terms of how are we providing services? That we have said are important to our community. And do we need these large spaces anymore, or do we just go with flexible spaces? That can be turned into spaces that are large enough for what the community wants. And very frankly, we asked the question, how large a group do we need to have space for libraries? We're not sure. We need to go out and find out. How large event spaces do we actually need to provide the library services? Not services that the community organization would like to have. When I look at large event spaces. Most of them are funded. By private organizations. Industries, corporations, wealthy individuals. Who want to sponsor a space. These are community spaces. We are the center of community, not the community center anymore. Because times have changed. How people gather. Our region, we don't know right now whether people are willing to use a. Do they feel comfortable with that? We've got a generation coming through like my grandkids. My kids have to remind the kids when they come home from school and take off their mask. They're used to wearing masks. I know so many people who are.
Ray, that's a lot of philosophy. I I I'm I'm hearing philosophy, philosophy, philosophy. I think that we've all heard that philosophy. I I have not heard anything that you said that would help Todd go forward. What is it that you want? You obviously have opposed this library from the beginning. That's why the the city council turned it down. So you say what it is you want, not philosophy.
Let me break you one thing. I have not opposed this library. I think you owe me apologies for saying that. I have opposed the central library size and location. I have been a library supporter since this, before this library district was founded. I'm one of the people who helped found this district. You think I did this because I don't like the library?
Okay, can can I just briefly?
No, I I I'm being insulted by my own board members.
Well, I said, you did not, you were not approving of this library, this central library. Where do you want to go from here besides philosophy?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the the sense is we have a, we have a bond, we have money. What is your plan forward beyond beyond your scope that services are changing and we hear you? So what do you propose we do is the question. What is what is your plan?
Okay, very specifically then, the reasons for saving this philosophy are the reasons for why I'm going to propose this. You're looking at saying, do we move this piece of this hundreds thousand square foot library to another location? That is not the question in my mind. And if you don't see that, then I have to explain to you why. That's why I'm trying to explain to you. The hundred thousand square foot is not an absolute necessity. It's not even in our bond.
Well, I, okay, so you are you are in favor of building a smaller facility.
No, I am in favor of first and all of going back out there to the public. We started out with a uh community advisory committee. Remember that, Todd? All the people who got together over at the uh.
I just want to know what you want to do.
I don't think I ever think we should reconvene that type of advisory committee to find out why there was this, why is there disagreement in the public?
So you're wanting to go back and start all over again from where we were. Several six years ago. You want to go back?
Yes, because where we went with what we learned six years ago has ended up in this very present situation.
Okay, so you want to start at the beginning?
No, no, I don't start beginning.
Well, where do you?
I want to start with a community advisory committee, very specifically, we get.
We have community advisory currently.
Let's get this committee together.
We have.
No, please. I just, can I hear? Let's all let Ray say.
If you want to say what I want to do, then you attack me for it. I will not say.
No, we're trying to find out what you.
I'm telling you what I'm saying.
Okay, so you want to go back to?
Sorry.
No, I don't want to go back to the beginning.
Okay.
I say we should get the community advisory committee together. We meet with them, discuss why we're having this disagreement within the community and on this board. Where do we go in terms of what the community really sees the library should be? Because any path we take. If we don't know what the community wants.
We do know what the community.
I just want to, I just want to hear.
Yeah, let's just let Ray say.
When you say they passed the bond, you just listened to our attorney saying, it did not say what a central library is. What the size, didn't say anything except that it was a central library. We could build an East Bend library, put HR and IT over there and call the central library because of the service. It doesn't need to be ten thousand, hundred thousand square feet. It could be the size of downtown, but we put other facilities like shipping and receiving return of books in another facility. And call it a central library.
Is that what you're proposing?
I'm saying that's a possibility. What I'm looking at and what we should be debating is, what are our options? If the board comes back with each of us saying, this is my one thing I want. And I say, this is my one thing we want, we're done. I mean, we're finished. We're going to be talking to each other, saying, how do I convince you of what I want? How do you convince me of what I want? Rather than looking at all the options around there. I'm saying, they normally know what options are out there for us. What are the alternatives? We should have the community involved in this as well as the board. So we get the community advisory committee back together. We meet with them, find out what they think the library should be providing. Then we can ask, yeah, we finished, we can ask them how they think they should, we should be providing that, what are their priorities? And then we take that into consideration as a board and say, okay, now what are the other options we have? Stapp gets us the reality inputs on this. That tells us, this is what we will cost if we do this. This is what we will lose if we do certain things, but gain if we do certain things. I am not prepared at this time, and I think we should come back, say right here and now. This is what we want. Because then we're just asking for argument. Why do we want what we think, what we say we want? And why the? Why do we really need to is backing that without knowing exactly what the community wants in a post pandemic world?
So Ray, you're gonna uh throw out all of the study, the research, the uh money that I'm sure was spent on consultations and. Uh experts. There's a lot of data. I have a huge book. Uh, experts, there's a lot of data, I have a huge book. That was done through the last, I'm assuming, six years. And you had consultants at the Wazoo to tell you. How to proceed, you had multiple, multiple. Community meetings in every branch. So you're going to take that entire data, the book, the consultations out at each branch and throw it out? And let's start all over?
So what you're suggesting is, we just proceed where we are at this roadblock and see how we can rid the roadblock by moving the library to another location? I mean, that's the only alternative you have there. Otherwise, you wait for their master plan or an area plan, or we will put another location with the plan we have. And what we're saying, I'm saying is, perhaps the plan we have is not the right plan. And that's why we're running into problems. After all. What determines the acreage that we need? Is the size of the building. If the size of the building is not a hundred thousand square feet. And it's smaller, we have other options. But if all you want to do is say, we have to take all the information we have up to this point and proceed and go forward. Then I'm saying we're done discussing it.
Well, what was the point of getting all that information in the first place?
I think we've heard what what Ray's plan is, maybe it's time for Bunny.
Yeah, Bunny, do you want to go?
Uh, yes. Uh, one, uh, as far as the city council, we talked about the city council uh, and that rejection. I think that had nothing, absolutely nothing to do with the verbiage or the U G B. Or uh, allowing um. Uh, accepting that uh, change in the U G B. It had to do with the people who do not want a central library. Um, and unfortunately, that skewed horribly that meeting. That being said, yes, I think I, again, I have this huge book, a lot of information. Uh, a lot of input from the public. And I think the plan that we had was a good one based on hardcore data that we paid dearly for. And if we're going to throw all of that out, we're going to go in circles. So I propose that we continue to look for another piece of property and um. Look to build a central library that will serve this community for the next twenty, thirty years.
Okay, you have questions or concerns?
Yes, I have a lot of concerns. If we buy another piece of property and try to put a central library on it, we're going to run into the same thing that people. Ray and Ann particularly were the ones that opposed uh, this library, and we're going to run into that same thing again.
So your solution is that Ray and Ann should acquiesce to what you want?
Absolutely not. I think it's something that we can. Come together as a board and work out a solution. Not go behind someone's back and um. Try and skew the solution that we had. We can come together. I liked Ann's ideas of, let's look at these um. The children's areas and provide the services. We can do this, we can do this as a board, but we cannot do it when there's subterfuge amongst here.
Could you expand on what you mean by going behind someone's back by subterfuge?
Well, Ray, you vote for um. You voted for many of the things for the central library, but when it comes to. Writing letters as a board member to the bulletin. Uh, going to the city council meeting and speaking against this, you're not speaking for the board. And I think that is the subterfuge. I think we need to speak with one voice and we can work that voice out. But we have to then, once we have voted and agreed on the direction we're going. We have to continue with that with one voice.
So did you read the article I wrote for the bulletin where I said, I wrote to them as an individual?
Yes, and you also said that you, how long you had been on the library, but I mean, it was on and on. I don't want to discuss or argue that point. But I think that we have not spoken and acted as one board on the decisions that the board has made.
Well, let me clarify for you. But the reason I wrote the article. And I wrote it as an individual, I gave my background. Which is perfectly all right, but then I disavowed saying I was, I was not speaking as a board member. And you're saying I did. I will agree with you that no matter what you're saying, disavowing people will always associate you with the major organizations that you represent, you work with.
Well, I, I think we're, I think we're getting into the past now and not the present, and that's not right.
Okay, let's, can we hear, hear your?
Yes, I was going to say where I stand. Okay. So um. As somebody who has been. Thinking and looking at this issue for a long time. I look back on all the work that has been done and. We've spent, we're now into eight years of. Developing a facilities plan that was designed to be forward thinking that was designed. To set us up well. For the growth we have experienced and for the growth that is coming in a fiscally prudent manner. So that was the impetus for this entire campaign. I shouldn't say campaign, because that sounds like the election. So that was for this effort. So we looked at what our current needs are, we looked at what our future needs were anticipated to be, and we called in experts to help us plan for the future. We developed a plan that was based on data. It was based on analysis of what each community needs and will need in the future. It was, it was based on what best leveraging money. To provide. The best possible services to our library users. And that's the plan that we put forward to voters. The. The key to that was a centralized facility. Where we could provide some of these. Services that cannot be provided through individual branches, such as automated facilities, such as room for more books. Such as larger gathering spaces, such as a variety of gathering spaces. For a children's discovery area that would knock the socks off the people in this county, where they could bring their kids and just. Uh, instill that love of reading, instill that love of curiosity and. You know, all of those things. We know that our facilities are mostly inadequate now, and so this was an attempt to rectify that situation. We were very, very clear in what we, what we proposed to voters. The ballot title, as our bond attorney said, is the starting point. And, and that language was. The best possible description that we could put forward, but then we supplemented that with a lot of explanatory material. That was extremely consistent. So we told the voters. What our vision was. It was on our website, it was in our meetings, it was in the newspaper, it was in mailers. We, we were, we provided as much information as possible. Before the election, the opposition also provided information on an alternative vision on what they saw as problems with the plan that we were. Proposing, the voters had a chance to look at all that material and to, to vote. So sixty-three thousand, more than sixty-three thousand people approved this plan as a good use of public money. And. I feel, I feel exactly. Like what our bond attorney has told us. That what the words that we said, the plan that we presented to voters, not just in the few words of the ballot title, but in all of the materials that we provided. Are our contract with what, what we said we were going to do. This is how we're going to use your money. And I don't see a reason to deviate. From. Our original plan. Because I believe that plan was based on data, it was based on forward thinking. You know, how can we set ourselves up for the future? It, we discussed, despite what Ray says, we discussed all of those issues on what is the future of libraries? What, and, and this board has always been forward looking, it's always been forward looking. And that's the reason we've invested so heavily in digital resources and how we were able to pivot so effectively at the beginning of the pandemic. So. I think the board has had a clear vision on what's needed and on what's gathering, what. What this community needs as far as spaces to come together, to learn together, to be inspired together. And I think that this plan reflects that. There's a lot of aspects to the central library. That drive improvements in each of our branches. And, and I feel like those functions are crucial. The automated processing in particular opens the way of the future for me. As far as pushing services out into our neighborhoods. Um, where, and we're actively researching those and have, have made, have budgeted money towards exploring those types of services. That's the wave of the future. When you talk about centralized services being a nineteen eighties model, I would suggest that branch libraries are a nineteenth century model. The, the large metropolitan systems that have a bunch of tiny branch libraries, as we heard, are. Are struggling with that because they're not an efficient, they're not a cost effective way of delivering services to the public. There's very limited things you can do with small branches, and that's the reason we chose not to go that route. We've got a limited amount of money to operate our library system, and we want to make the best possible use of that money and get. Services out, materials out to the public in. In forward looking ways. So to me, this plan reflects that. And I am unwilling. To. I, I, I think the, it's important to recognize that this building was sized, I mean, it's not like the architects. Or the facilities planners picked this. This square footage out of a half. They said, based on the things that you are trying to accomplish, based on the original goals of the project. This is a sized facility that you need. To accomplish those things, and I think that the things that we're trying to accomplish are still valid, pre pandemic, post pandemic, they're, they're. They're what we need to be doing. So I am not willing to build libraries. That don't accomplish what our goals for this building project were. I'm not willing to skim. On delivering the services that the people of this county need. I'm also not willing to build libraries that we cannot afford to build, staff and maintain. I'm not willing to do that. Um, I'm also not willing to subsidize inequitable delivery of services. I know that people in Lapine and Sun River and Sisters say, we want more, we want a bigger library, we want more. And I, you know, I don't blame them for saying that, but we've got to look at. What's equitable in our county, the, for the, all the people that we serve. And clearly, the growth has been. Most impactful in Ben and in Redmond. Redmond's tripled in size since the last time we built libraries. It's doubled in Ben. So, so, yeah, well, Pine is growing, Sun River is growing, Sisters is growing, but not as much as Bend and Redmond are growing. So that's where we need to look towards the future. So I would, I, I think it is important that we continue discussions. With brown rigs. And to see whether there's any path forward there. Because I do believe that that site is an excellent site, particularly for the, for convenience for the public and for. Distribution of materials. I think we need to continue to explore alternative delivery methods. Um, which we are starting down that road. Um, because I think that's where a lot of the future. Lies in bricks and mortar, I, I mean, other than bricks and mortar, in these new ways of delivering services, that is the future. And that, that addresses the needs for convenience. Um, I think looking for property is a good idea. And I am. Somewhat doubtful. That we are going to find suitable property, but let's look. I mean, if, we looked two years ago extensively, let's see what's available today. And let's see. What we can find. So. But, but number one thing is, I'm not about. To violate the public trust. People, people are trusting us with their tax money. And I am not going to propose one thing and deliver something else to the public because that's. I believe illegal. But most of all, I believe it's unethical. And I personally can't stand up here and take money and then do something completely illegal. So that's where I stand.
So let me clarify, you're saying. I've heard this several times. The people voted for this. We won. By four percent. Right?
It doesn't. It doesn't.
A win is a win, right?
Well, basically, in a democracy, yes.
You, you realize that the same election, six under Oregon library financial issues won by twenty to thirty percent.
Well, Ray, does that matter? What is the relevance of that?
So it tells us.
I, I see no relevance in that, Ray, at all. Uh, it won, it won, that was, that's the end of it.
That is the end of it, and also the reason that we didn't win by more was the misinformation that you promulgated. That we were going, well, oh, when you said in your column.
Well, if I had written a letter two weeks earlier, we would have lost. I mean.
What?
If I had written my opinion piece, that was the only thing I promulgated, my opinion piece.
Right, and you, and you advanced.
And I thought us from a potential twenty percent win to four percent. I mean, I'm pretty, pretty powerful in that.
Well, I think that the fact that, that people became. There, there was a number of other, there was other information that was not true. That was floated before the election, which confused people. Yeah, and so regardless, regardless of any of that, the voters approved this. This bond venture was approved. So, so it. So, so it isn't a comparison, it's, it's an approval.
So if we won by point five percent, you would say we still have a problem.
We won.
Yes, absolutely. If we won, we won that election, and that's what counts. It wasn't what you wanted, but you are one person on this board.
And you are, you are, I, I hate to say this, but you were dangerously close to talking about, this is why I'm standing in the Capitol on January sixth. Because I don't believe that, I know, but that's the difference in that election.
Four percent, tell me something about the election.
No, no.
Todd is very right. Todd is very right. Biden won. He is our president. If you voted for Trump, too bad. He is, Biden is our president. If you voted against this bond issue, too bad. The bond issue passed. Let's get over this. I'm tired of discussing how many percentage points it passed.
Can I? Getting into the weeds here, you guys.
Sorry.
We are. Okay, um, we obviously are a divided board. I think we need to figure out how to compromise. I think we need to find where are we in agreement? I cannot agree with you at all, Ray. I am not willing to start all over again. That to me is, that would be taking the taxpayers' money and abusing it. So, and as Ann said, you've already done all the groundwork, you've already brought in the public. All of that has been done. Yes, there are some people that are not happy with how it, the election went. But that's unfortunately, I'm sorry, we can't do that. But we can figure out how to compromise, and that's what I'd like us to do. So we can move forward and tell Todd and the staff how we want to move. So are there grounds for compromise with you guys?
Oh, I I'm starting to feel very uncomfortable.
I am too.
Yeah, if, I, I treasure this library system, I, it's probably at the core of why I do a lot of my advocacy work, because it provides services to people I work with. There is room for compromise, but I think it's going to require all of us, not just Ray and I, to really look at what each other is saying and what we value. There is more to this bond than the central library. Right, there is the Redmond Library and then the, the upgrades in that. So there's more issues than just the central library, and I think sometimes we forget that. In our, in our meetings, it's always the central library, the central library. We need to look at this as a system. I guess, there's many parts to this. So I think going forward, we need to take a step back, take some breaths, and really think about what everyone is contributing and what they're saying. And I know it's getting kind of personal, getting kind of uncomfortable, but I think we can compromise. And I think we need to also take into consideration what our constituents are asking. I get many, many questions, and I would like to be able to bring those questions to this board to get information so that I can go back and share that. So I think we need more time as a board to have this kind of discussion and this kind of opportunity to talk. Yeah, we need time outside of our board, our board meetings to do that. So I think there is room for compromise moving forward. I don't want us to look at each other as enemies, because that's not it at all. That's not my intent to come in here and, and throw wrenches into it. It really is to look at what this opportunity presents to the, to the libraries of Deshays County. No, I agree completely, and I think this has been a central library focused discussion, because that's where our biggest roadblock lies right now. But no, I, I agree completely, and I think that's the plan was really predicated on how could we improve services at all the libraries and improve what we're offering at all the libraries. Um, and I, you know, and that's all, the board is always operated that way, you know, like this is a system and we need to really make it good for everybody in the library. So, yeah, no, I'm totally in agreement with that. And, and I want to see improved services at each of our branches. For sure.
So I agree with Ann Ness there that, yes, we can compromise, we can come together as a board. I, I think that was a very good point, Ann. Um, but I would like to know, what do you suggest, um, we give, what direction do we give Todd at this point? Um, we can talk about this all day, but we still need to give some direction to Todd. What's your suggestion, Ann Ness?
Thanks, Bunny. I, to tell you the truth, I don't know. Um, I, I, um, I would like to see the, the size of a central library cut down a little bit just so that it gives us a little wiggle room to look at what we can do on East Bend. A permanent library there, also, um, bumping up the, uh, the budget allocated to, to the branches to just kind of to make sure that that, that that budget's not decreased because, you know, because of the delay and in the impact of this delay. So, um, there's just a lot of questions. So I, I can't say as of right this minute that I have a direct plan, and I'm sorry. There's just a lot of, a lot of pieces in play here. So I apologize for not saying this is the direction I want you to take, because I still think I need to, to do something.
And, and do you, do you feel like that we should give Todd the direction to go out and look for a new piece of property for the central library and then possibly revisit the size of that central library and the allocation of funding?
I do think that's an alternative. I think that would just be additional information for us to have to make decisions going forward. Todd, do you, I mean, this is kind of segueing into the third part of this work session. So Todd, do you have, would you like to just hear from us, or do you have options that you would like us to respond to?
Or let me lay out what I see happening and just checking with the board, because right now, like I said, there's the, the, our basic three options. I recommend, I would recommend that we look for land, just at least to see what's out there and to inform our discussion. I think we still should try and work with the, the neighboring property owner, just to see if that is, again, another option for us. So I think those are two avenues that, that I would like to still have on, on the table. And I think, um, I think those are, those are some steps to help inform the board. I will encourage, encourage you all that we started this process in two thousand and fourteen. And since, since that day that we started, fifty thousand more people moved into this community. And so for us to not act and to start over and, and go through this process for another, another four or five years, we are, we will be even more behind at that point. And so that's a danger. So inaction is also, inaction is action in itself. It, it creates other issues. I really think when you're looking at what you're doing, that you should be very cognizant of what the voters voted for. And, and Ray, I apologize for that analogy. That was not fair. But I, but the fact is that the voters did vote for something. As a board, five nothing vote, we went out and we said, we're going to put this in front of the voters and we're going to let them decide. And I think when we did that, the assumption was that the voters have the intelligence to make a decision for themselves, and they did. Whether it was, whatever the percentage was, it doesn't matter, they voted, and we need to honor that vote. And so I think that's one thing that I definitely encourage the board, is you've heard from the bond council, yes, you can enable uh, some of the things that we do and, um, you know, maybe that would be, we could get by with the language, but really, I think you should honor what we told the voters when we went in there. And then I just encourage you to, to think about, these things have impacts. Every day, every Wednesday, I leave my office and I see people standing out in the rain and the snow waiting to get vaccinations. And they don't have to be doing that, but they're going to the public library because that's a trusted place to go. And they're waiting out in the rain because we have a room that will only hold eighty people. We're sitting in a room right now, uh, that barely holds forty people, and we got seventy people showing up for storytimes right now. These, this population growth is impacting us, so we do need to take action. One way or another, however it comes out, we need to take action. There are impacts that are happening right now that, that are affecting us. Uh, even looking at the, the very exciting things we could do out in the community with kiosks, um, all of those things. We, we basically put on hold because we don't have a, a place to support them. We are tapped out at our, at our locations. So I, I guess that would be my encouragement. I think the number one priority for the board right now is to act as a board. And I think we all know it, and I, and I, we have studied this, Ray and Ann, you've been there, and we've talked about the board speaking as one voice. And that needs to happen. No matter what happens, uh, we all, as Ray said, we're all invested in this library. We wouldn't be here if we weren't invested in the library. We're having arguments about the best way to best serve our public, which is awesome. Because that's what we should be doing. But at the end of it, we're going to find ways to best serve our public. And it may come out as a five to nothing vote, or a four to one vote, or a three to two vote. Uh, but at some point, we need to make decisions. As I said, inaction is, is, it tells something. If we sit and don't do anything, more people will keep moving in. They're, they're coming. So that is the number one thing I need from the board. I need you to work together as a board and to honor your commitments. However that comes out, otherwise none of this works. I shared with you, uh, the comments from the staff, and I think it's very clear that what, however we may want to justify this, there's some real lives involved here, that we're, we're impacting people and they're concerned. It's, it's very un, just unstabiling to see the people that are supposed to be leading their organization not working together. So that would be my big encouragement for you. We do have a work session in June. I think that work session should be, I, at this point, it's not even about what steps we take, it's about how we're going to operate as a board. But those are my thoughts. I think you've given me enough direction to go on. Uh, if, if you agree that, yes, continue to look for land and, uh, and continue to try to work with our neighbors, um, I can go forward with that. And I also, you have some, you still have big decisions in front of you. Today, we'll be, be talking about the Redmond Library and, um, and I think that's a critical piece of this project. As we said, it's not all about the central library. But there are some big decisions to make. And we need to, we need to make sure that we're, we're moving forward. And so that's going to be another critical decision.
I think given that we are in division here, disagreement, we'd be wise to suspend some of the contracts that we have. We're allowed to do that rather than proceeding forward. Because if we don't find any piece of property that will take a hundred thousand square foot library, and we do decide that we will make something like seventy thousand, sixty thousand square foot, something smaller, uh, a different piece of property available for us. The design of the central library will change because of the size change. Would it be physically more responsible for us to tell the architects we need to suspend for the work on the central library? And the, for the name of suspended, designed in there. Since our contract allows us to do that, we're not, we're not, uh, negating the contract, we're suspending it. No more money being spent until we actually come as a board and decide where we're going and how we're going to do, what we want to see. Because any money we spend from now until that point could be a real waste of money. Is that something we ought to do?
I, I agree with that, and we have suspended all work on the central library.
Okay.
Ray's report.
Yes, for that very reason. There's no reason to spend money on something that may not go forward. Just a quick reminder.
It's already suspended.
Yep.
So does anyone have any objection or thoughts on what Todd has outlined as the actions that he's taking as far as continuing to work with the brown rigs, initiating a property search? Is there anything else that we should be looking at?
Well, what's, what's the parameter on the size of the property?
Uh, we have told them it was between seven, we said it include seven and twelve, but I think we have also a little bit small, back down to the five, the original criteria of the spot.
Five acres.
Five to twelve.
Yeah.
So that's really what they're looking at.
Five to ten acres.
Five to twelve.
To twelve, five to twelve, in that range.
And is there any preference for geographic location?
All areas.
All areas.
Well, is what they're looking at.
We, we have been looking in Bend.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. I mean, we're not going to look at half of it.
Basically, the same criteria that existed previously that throughout the Bend metro area.
So we're looking within the city limits already? Or potentially within?
I think it's within the city limits and all of those areas that are defined for the U G E program.
Okay. So you'd be looking at anything like the Stevens Road track?
Yes.
And also the, the, the track that's to the west of the one that's being planned for right now, because that's already in U G E. The home master planning there. The one right next to Twenty-seventh. My understanding is.
There are all those properties.
All of those properties within the area.
Yes. They're looking at whatever, everything they can find available.
So I would suggest that if you have property that you're particularly interested in, to make sure that you relay that information to Greg. So that we don't miss anything. I know that we went before, we rejected the first list and asked them to make it broader, so not just properties that were, that are for sale, but all properties that fit that size criteria. So if there is particular.
I would say any property that's either within the U G B or or has a master plan or area plan in place, it's already been approved. Not to look at things like the old variety where we have to ask for the text amendment, go by ourselves, or whatever.
Right, I think, you know, some of the U G B areas may not have a master plan approved. But that may not, you know, I think we should still look at those areas. Because the city's already said, this is, the U G B areas are areas they intend to bring into the city. So they would be looking, they were areas that were looked at previously.
I, I think having as broad a net as we can have right now is important, and then, um, and then we can make those, I mean, as we did before, we can narrow that down to what properties seem to be strong.
Yes. Well, we'll get
I think we should let, we should let Greg and Bradley go ahead, go forth and do their thing and bring whatever results they have. Let's not hamstring them into specifics that don't mean anything at this point.
So Todd, would this list be available for our main meeting?
Yes.
So I would think that this discussion would be, I mean, this is more than a five-minute discussion, so.
I would recommend that we start early in the main meetings. We have a budget as well. I will know. So that, what we'll be doing is looking at, really bringing information. I don't expect a win decision to come out of that, so that's a factor that I think it's important at least to get in front of the board, here's what we're looking at. Just so we have a, a idea of what the picture looks like.
So we're not making, making any cuts or anything of that.
Cuts?
Yes, if they come back and say, here's, you know, ten properties, we're going to reel it down to nine.
I, I
Let's look at it.
What we do with that, it's up to the board. I just, we're finding I'm bringing information.
Just give me a few.
And, and there's always a zoom. I mean, I'm not there, so you can zoom in.
Well, not unless I want to get divorced.
Well, she's
Decision.
I mean, she said, we go away now. This has always been our time to get away from all the board services we're on. I'm on four boards, she's on three. I mean, we're not, we don't take any calls on anything.
My, my expectation based on the last process is that we would not be walking out of that meeting a direct, well, a direction to go forward. You know how the process goes, even in, that happens. Even if we did find some land, the point to do that, there's a long due diligence process. I do not expect that to come out of a meeting. That we, that we, I definitely hope to get some direction about which properties the boards intend.
Okay, so the plan forward would be, receive this report immediately on our next meeting. And then, so that we have a chance to really talk to the realtors and ask questions and and then for our June work session, I think Todd's suggestion on board governance, how we work together, how we go forward is extremely important, especially in the light of staff conflicts and, or comments and, and just to be able to get a better working relationship amongst us. Because I agree that compromise is needed and that, that we need to find ways to effectively work together because what we're doing right now is counterproductive and is damaging, so. That's, that's what I've got. And so why don't we, if everybody's amenable, let's adjourn for lunch and we can, how's that?
Okay.
Yes. You good? Okay. I'd like to call regular meeting, equal meeting of the U G Public Library Board to order and welcome everybody. It's good to see so many people in the crowd. Our first item on the agenda is our minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. Let's start with the work session minutes.
And this is funny, ev- everything I'm hearing from there is broken up. Is, is anybody else hearing that same thing?
You can hear?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
I, I can't hear. I, it's just broken up. Is, am I the only one that's hearing that?
Looks like it might be you. Buddy, you might want to either call on the phone or log out and log back in. Everybody else is hearing fine, apparently.
I, I'm gonna leave and then I'll try to zoom back in.
It's like two years in. Yeah, it just seems like I'm glad for the capability, but I'm also exasperated by the capability. Wait just a second. I thank you for your patience, everybody.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Right now, it's just, it's still broken up.
Can we turn on, can you turn on closed captioning?
You might want to call in on your cell phone, and I can email you that number.
She should.
Yes.
Okay.
I still can't hear. It's broken up.
Okay. Okay, Todd is sending you, can you call in on your, on your phone?
I, I texted.
Okay. Okay. Really?
I got something from Todd, but I don't see a phone number.
Okay, Todd's sending it. We should have just left everything the way it was. It was working before.
I, I don't have a phone number to dial on the phone.
Okay.
Can you text it?
In chat.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you're looking at the chat.
Yeah.
Maybe you can text it.
Uh, well, yeah, do you have the number? I can send it to you.
Oh, I just got one. I need him, I, it calls into Zoom and I need a meeting ID. If you can hear me, I have two phone numbers. One starts is one six four six. And then I have another number that is nine eight eight. Is the nine eight eight, that's the meeting ID. Okay, okay, here we go.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound.
All right. Can you, can you hear us now?
No, not yet.
Not yet. Okay.
Oh, whoops. Now. Okay, there you go. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, I think we're back to business, folks. Another hurdle overcome. Okay, so we're, we're approving the minutes. Did people have a chance to review the March seventh work session minutes? Any additions or corrections?
Why not, under the discussion, the role of board in building projects?
I think we we discussed it, but we did not.
I think that's Have, have the minutes. Also remember that it's recorded, so if you want to go back and listen to it, you can.
Did we make a decision on the role of
I think you just have the discretion.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to move to approve, approve the March seventh, twenty twenty two work session minutes as written.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. If you're accepted, now entertain a motion to our March ninth meeting minutes. Any additions or corrections on those? I need to approve the March ninth, twenty twenty two minutes as written. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. We're now at the public comment section of our meeting. And the board is committed to hearing from the public, and we are pleased that you've taken the time to speak to us today. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. While we will not directly respond, public comments are engaging dialogue with speakers, we seriously consider input from the public. Public comments at meetings is one important way the board receives feedback and it enables us to do our job of formulating policies to govern the district. Thanks for taking the time to speak to us today. So Todd, do you have, you have the list?
We do have the list. I also have anybody online would like to make a comment, use the raise your hand feature. And what would you align to?
Okay, so we will go through these in order starting with Tina Davis.
Good afternoon. My name is Tina Davis. I am a library staff. I've worked with the library for ten years. I'm presenting to you today a letter signed by some of the D P L staff members. These are members of the management, librarian, and supervisory teams. We, the undersigned staff, are disappointed and discouraged by the role board members Ray Meow and M Ness have played in actively working to undermine the results of a bond measure that passed on the vote of the people. It has been said that libraries are a cornerstone of democracy, and to watch two library board members actively work against what the public voted for is is all that we hold dear as civil servants. The library board voted five to zero to put the bond measure on the ballot and to let the people decide. And the people did decide. In a direct democratic vote, like in bonds and initiatives, the vote of the majority of citizens decides the election regardless of margin. But we are sure you understand that. Despite the majority vote, board members Meow and Ness continue to speak publicly against the central library and by proxy their own board and what the people voted for. They did so both in public city forums and in newspaper editorials. After the bond's approval by the voters, the city planning commission voted to recommend the council-approved tax amendments needed to move forward with the central library. And in that very meeting, these library board members continued to speak publicly against the central library and did so yet again at the city council. It is difficult to express how disheartening it is to witness two members of our board work so hard against the Democratic majority of their board peers and against the library's own executive team, all seemingly done because they do not like the majority vote and the mandated carries. Board members Meow and Ness, we live in a time of seemingly unending strife and struggle, and our work serving the public provides a refuge and hope for us during these times. To have strife and struggle brought to our doorstep and into our work culture through your actions is demoralizing. We ask that you accept the vote of the people in a free and fair election and move forward as library allies. If this is not possible, we lose confidence in your ability to lead without ego. And therefore ask that you consider resigning your positions so that we can return to doing the important work of serving the public without feeling forever at odds with the very people who are supposed to help us do that work. This letter is respectfully signed by more than twenty community librarians, managers, and supervisors, and I will provide you with a copy of that. Just as a personal side note, this is not part of the letter. I just want to mention that right now at the library, you're talking a lot about psychological safety and how managers and supervisors can foster that in our staff. And I would ask you, the board, to do the same reflection on what you're doing to either foster or harm psychological safety of the staff at issues of the library.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Sarah Thompson. Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Thompson. I've been a Ben resident for ten years and a library employee for five years. I wanted to follow up with Tina's letter. I thank board members Cynthia and Malcolm and Bunny Thompson for your continued fight for making sure that this project goes through. And I did want to just share a few notes that you might consider listening for in future board meetings, including this morning's work
And I did want to just share a few notes that you might consider listening for in future board meetings, including this morning's work session, which I also listened to. There are manipulation techniques that I believe are at play in this board specifically from board member Meow. Number one is gaslighting, which is a form of psychological manipulation in which the user attempts to sow self doubt and confusion in the victim's mind. Typically, gaslighters are seeking to gain power and control over the other person by distorting reality and forcing them to question their own judgment and intuition. The second technique is projection, a defense mechanism used to displace responsibility of one's negative behavior and traits by attributing them to someone else. And finally, there's moving the goalposts, employed in order to ensure that they have every reason to be perpetually dissatisfied. And when after being provided all the evidence to validate arguments are then taking action, are then setting up another expectation and demanding more proof. So these are things that I have seen just by listening to board members myself. And I hope that in the future, all the board members can use self-reflection and look at how they're behaving in the future.
Thank you. Next up, Liz Goodrich.
Can you hear me through my mask? I've got a cold. I don't want to spread my germs. So, is everybody here okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to see this. I've been so, I'm Liz Goodrich, Adult Programs Supervisor for District 4. And I cannot tell you the heartbreak that I'm experiencing watching this debacle. And I have to. This is a question. If we go back to the drawing board, which is something that I think came with. Who really think that voters are going to give us a redo? I think the community and the public, the public and our staff, what faith and confidence. In the library, reputation of good work that we do, that we try to do in our communities is going to be damaged. And for that, I think you should be ashamed. And I'm not sure where we're going to go, but I do want you to know a slight enjoyment we've taken out of the work.
Can we close the door?
Thank you. Leanne?
Yeah, yeah. I would hope you'd get Nancy Cook who wanted to be here today and I have a very brief text message from her. She was unwell and I took her to attention. So I just want to say, I'm very excited that my Redmond Library is going to grow and expand. When I moved here 37 years ago, the library is where our Chamber of Commerce now is. And I remember how hard it was to find things that I wanted and now I just feel like I have access to a whole new world with this library. Feel very cared for by this staff. Feel that I can ask for anything by needs and somehow those needs will admit their creativity even when I'm not very articulate about what is I looking for. So I feel the sadness for Ben and his loss, but I am celebrating what's happening in my own community because I get my needs met and I watch how many people. Use this library and people of all stripes and it's such a wonderful community source. But I have a block away, which is a little bit dangerous because I live here on business. So thank you for moving forward with the Redmond piece of the project. I'm hopeful it can change for Ben because I'm not losing him. And then, oh, from Nancy Cook. I had great concern about moving to a small community after retiring from an academic setting. I have been delighted, no actually astounded with the access to materials that the Schuylkill Library in particular, will be the Redmond Library provides. Programming here gives me top-notch information. And access to top-notch informational speakers. The staff here are the best that libraries have to offer. I love and appreciate what the Redmond Library offers me and other patrons. Thank you.
Richard?
Yes, welcome to Redmond. I've been at Redmond for many years and. I use the library primarily for books for myself, but I also get a bag of books and story time to go. And every week I go to a preschool in Redmond and. Do a story time there. Done that for about seven years, I guess. And I also come to a lot of adult programs. So I'm a very enthusiastic library user and I'm very happy of the expansion that's coming to the Redmond Library. And I can see this library is when I come in here by all ages. I see people on the internet and I see kids going to story time. And all the usual things. So we're excited. I'm excited about the expanded library here. I know that will bring expanded library programs out in our community too. So thank you for supporting that and we look forward to. Using the expanded library. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, McAnaney? You don't have, but you may.
I've been here in Redmond for seven and a half years and. This was the first place I came to. And this staff has been absolutely wonderful. I didn't know a soul in Redmond when I came here. Between here and the senior center, I had felt. At home. And I want to praise the library staff for the COVID period. They did an awesome job there, keeping the library open for us to use it under extremely difficult circumstances and helping us to be safe. They deserve a lot of credit.
Thank you very much. Todd, do we have any online?
Let's see, has anybody online wish to speak? Raise your hand. Or unmute. Does not look like we have anybody online.
Well, thank you, everybody, for taking the time out to express your views. As I said, we appreciate it and. Hearing from the public. Is always extremely gratifying. It's one of the reasons we move around the county so that we can get a chance to hear from people in all the communities we serve. So thank you very much. From there, we're going to move on to our governance policy, process policies. We have bond updates. And first up is our Redmond Library design from Miller Mall Architects.
Okay, so Ruth, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay.
I mean, hopefully you can share your screen. That is working.
Okay, how does that look? Good? And I'll. All right. Well, thanks, everyone. Do you hear me okay?
A lot better.
Okay. Um, thank you for giving us a little bit of time on the agenda today. We'll give you an update on Redmond. What you, we just have a few slides, so what I'll try to do is just go through all of them. And then we can take questions on any of the material at the end, just so that we're able to make good use of your time today. Um, what you're seeing on the screen is a site plan of the, kind of the south portion of that Redmond site. I'm sure you can remember Schuylkill Avenue to the south, 9th on the west. And this front portion is where we really put a lot of energy into that civic patio, making a. Great kind of gesture about what the library is about, that large covered porch for shading and activities outside. And really kind of daylighting the excitement that's, that's happening inside and outside the library. Um, the, in this landscape, you're seeing areas where we will have plantings and trees. We're saving trees along 9th and along the north property line and then bringing in trees and vegetation on the south. And then along that east side with the drive-up window, also trying to both keep and introduce new vegetation there on the east side. And so this is a landscape architect's drawing of the patio. You're seeing it kind of in a C shape in kind of an almond color there with some outdoor furnishings and act. You can see the, to kind of give you a sense of size. And let's go to the, here. Now we're looking at a floor plan of level one, so we're looking at the entire building. North is still up to Schuylkill Avenue, still at the bottom of your screen. You probably remember that we have, I'll try to annotate here, we have entries from the north coming from the parking lot as well as entries from the south coming from the sidewalk and the rest of kind of the downtown area. And when you arrive and in this, you know, orientation zone in the center of the library, lots of display, you'll have your stuff, new, exciting, hot reads. And then we have, you know, your holds here to the left. We still have the creative space, lots of seating, the meeting rooms here on the upper left available during the day and after hours. And then really thinking about this area here on the right as, you know, all things children. So let me clear that, just so we can. There we go. And then when we go upstairs, this is where the lot of the rest of the collection will live. So nonfiction in the upper left-hand corner, fiction, teens. And lots of display kind of down the center of the building. And then you can see we're really capitalizing on these, that great view out to kind of, you know, downtown Redmond and the windows to the south. I'll kind of highlight that. So lots of seating kind of in and around here along these windows. And then I think the coworking is another area that, that we're hearing a lot of excitement surrounding. So places where you can come in and do a Zoom call, a team meeting, an interview, a consultation, and then drop-in computer stations, seating. Printer scanner, you know, all those things that kind of benefit people who are working from home or just need somewhere, not at their office to get some work done. Oops, hang on just a second. Um, we've been working on the photovoltaic arrays for the building and the parking lot so that we get to that net zero target. Which I think is a really exciting commitment to sustainability and energy use for the library. Really making an example and really affecting your bottom line too over the coming years of operation. Uh, we've been working on the elevator, which is our way of saying the appearance of the building on the outside, thinking about how we're combining brick and windows and. You know, views in and out and really controlling the daylight into the building, but also making it a beautiful space to be in and a really great kind of contribution to the neighborhood character. Just some of the side elevations. Materials, we have submitted preliminary materials to the city of Redmond as part of their land code compliance. So you're seeing kind of a brick here that has that warm, rich color, thinking about the areas where we'll have metal, like the window frame and. And some other solid panel areas. We have some wood, northwest wood in the, in the ceiling and the structure on the inside of the building. You'll see wood trusses, columns, beams, but then also the big porch roof that you see coming out will have wood on the underside. So you'll see that warmth kind of. So these are just really preliminary views where we start to study what, what palette and the expression is starting to look with. You're looking at that outdoor patio, lots of great eating and activities kind of spilling to the outside. Here, preliminary view, if you were from the parking lot, kind of walking toward the meeting rooms and that north entry, you're seeing that warm wood ceiling kind of from the outside inviting you, inviting you. And on the interior as well, just the beginning of working on the interior of the building and thinking about how that warm wood character shelving, the activities, the furniture and art start to make a really dynamic library for the downtown. I think that's all we have. So maybe I'll stop sharing just so that we can see faces a little better and. Comments or questions?
Any comments or questions?
I think it looks beautiful. Hi, I do want to ask Anne Ness, she was so concerned about the children's and early learning. And if this is what she's talking about and it satisfies what she was talking earlier.
Ruth, could you go back to the slide that had the downstairs?
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, let's see here. And what I will say here as I go to the slide, we've really just begun working with DPL to understand how much collection we want. What's the right balance of seedings and collection and display and program space? So this is all probably going to keep getting refined and, and adjusted over the coming months. So this is really a great time for, for updating, you know, questions or comments you might have.
Well, one thing we talked about was having kind of a private space closer to the early learning because we do have. Special service groups that often do family kind of get-togethers and sometimes they're asking for maybe a little more of a private space where they can actually meet with clients.
Yeah, and we have, I think we did look at a number of configurations of small, you know, whether you call it a study room, a meeting room or a creative room, locating several areas of the building. So you're kind of seeing three down here on the lower left and then there are others upstairs. And so trying to make sure they're kind of available for any number of users.
Right, and it's open enough. I think there's. A lot of room position between activities as well.
So Ruth, just to refresh, or Todd, oops, excuse me. We're being asked to consider here today is. The overall site plan and major components, but not, but we aren't really deciding what, right, I mean, walls, not furnishes, right? Is what we're being asked to approve today.
Yeah, and so what's already been submitted to the city of Redmond, really talking about kind of that, the basic decisions on the site. You know, we're, we have this much parking, we're placing the building here, it's this size, it's this tall. So getting those kind of basic decisions in place, we'll continue to evaluate and select furnishings and shelving within the budget that you've allocated over the coming months. So that's, that's really not, we don't have enough for you to kind of evaluate today, but I think that's a fair statement.
Okay, thank you. So any other questions or concerns, comments? Yeah. These plans look fairly similar to the conceptuals that we approved earlier. Have there been any major modifications since that set of, last set of plans?
No, the team's really been working on things that, that I would say are more technical, that the city requires for that land use to middle. So there's a number of sheets you have to develop that demonstrate code compliance. The, the, really, the floor plan has remained generally the same. So I think you're not seeing any major changes.
All right, any other? Comment, well, we've got Ruth. comments while we've got Ruth?
I I do go ahead. The necessity of is, I mean, that's not really necessary, I just put there as an option for you. If if nothing changes, we will continue on, we'll move into construction designs at this point. So it's kind of up to the board if you want to have that discussion about about proceeding or not.
But I think, I mean, I think we determined earlier that it's useful
Yes.
to put each stage. We don't get to a further stage and come up against a problem.
And just to, and Greg even help us with this, so the next phase is going to be construction designs for after after this.
Right, so I mean, that's that, there's a lot of time and effort that goes into that phase, so we need to make sure that these conceptual designs are acceptable.
These are the the design.
Yeah, this is a design development and I'll talk a little bit more about it in my report, but we're doing, you know, cost estimates, schedule evaluations. And a real detailed interview by multiple team members as well as DPL. Before they actually move into construction documents, so we all will literally receive feedback from you could almost say every active stakeholder team member. Down to staff, we've got some staff comments already, they look at it. So, but you guys are a very key component of that whole stakeholder group. Giving us your feedback.
So what, but but did you answer Ann's question about a smaller area near the children's rooms?
I think, yeah, yes.
Oh, good, good, okay.
Okay, well, I would entertain a motion.
And I'll point out, you may want to wait to hear Greg's report if that helps because he's going to have more information for you, it's up to you.
Okay.
It sounds like that might help inform some of this as well.
Do you want to wait? Okay, all right, well, we're going to hold off on a motion until we hear from Greg. So you're up, Greg.
All right, well, thank you, Ruth.
Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, just to kind of spike or dive in right in here on the overall bond program. You know, I think in my general notes, I noted that even based on at things, activity that happened this past month, we have made adjustments and changes and I'll talk more in depth about what direction we've already issued to our project team members. And that's our all of our design consultants, our contractors, as well as ourselves. From a schedule impact. Right now. As we went through in March and went to the city council meeting on the central library and got their feedback. And it was evident that they were not supportive of our tax amendment and complaint amendment. And from that act determination, the application was withdrawn on there. At that point, we really stopped all activity on central library. That impact from a scheduling, so everything stopped there, that also stopped all activity that would occur in sequence on downtown bend as well as east bend. So those three projects really link together how we approach all of them collectively. The projects that moved forward, of course, are Redmond is continued nonstop. We took a brief pause on Sisters and Lapine just to reassess. And that brief pause was literally about a week. And the both Sisters and Lapine are proceeding as originally planned on the schedule that we had anticipated. Sun River is the last of the seven projects is on a we were scheduled to commence schematic design phase in March. That was put on hold and we requested the design team to do a study of some options on that project. So we're not moving forward currently as with the original plan that was shown in the concept level. But looking at a couple of options that will be vetted through by the team and DPL and determine are there any changes that want to be implemented before continuing to schematic. The impact overall schedule was, right, what does this mean? And I tried to summarize it, it's hard to determine the full impact. We talked about, you know, what the options that we're going to have to bet and go through and look at. What do we do with central library, where does it get placed, what's our next steps? And we've got some immediate short term actions. You know, as we realized, okay, we're not going to be able to move forward as planned on the rural site. Or central library, we started, you know, immediately thinking about, okay, what's those next action steps? What are those other options that we should think about and consider? We talked about those, continuing to investigate opportunities for the rural site with our adjacent property. And evaluate and look at properties revisiting the prior property investigation that was done in the selection of the rural site and what else is out there. In my report, I said I didn't have a specific impact kind of ways to tell you today. As we've been working through over the last few weeks, I started to develop impact schedules. And I will tell you today, this is a significant impact to the project on schedule. And when I say significant, I mean, it's multiple months, potential year plus to the entire bond program. And when I say that, I want to be, hopefully, we'll be clear with you. There's certain projects like Redmond is going to continue forward unabated and should not, and I would not expect it to change unless we choose to change it. Sisters and Lapine will move forward as planned unabated, again, unless we choose to change it. Central project is the driver for downtown bend. So neither of those, until we figure out what we're going to do with central downtown bend, just will continue to push up because downtown bend happens after central opens. And so they are very much linked together. So when we talk about impacts to one, we talk to central where you also talk about impact to downtown bend. East Bend is really trying to be very prudent, let's understand what we're going to do with central. Before we go and do any further work at East Bend. We had already talked earlier from the February meetings. That we were doing a reevaluation of the scope of work at East Bend and how much are we going to spend there? And at this point, those things are all whole. Sun River will have, like I said, some adjustment to the schedule. I put in my report, I think a two to three month period, it's probably realistic and that's probably where it's at. So it operates very much independent, the others, we staggered doing Sisters and Lapine first, that way Sun River would be open when sis Lapine is closed and vice versa. But it really doesn't affect any other library in the system once we decide to do construction on that. I updated the matrix in the report as far as those dates, I did take, yeah. But then we're depends on central because of the staff instructions or and what else? So there's a lot of administrative functions that happen in Bend and all the distribution, we talked about the automated AMH distribution. Those functions move out of downtown bend into the central library. It frees up. You know, downtown bend doesn't get larger, but the public space increases by thirty to forty percent because it's currently occupied by functions that will be consolidated.
All those internal, right, internals of the building functions are dependent on another location.
Right.
Can we rent?
Right.
A location for that?
I I want to remind us that we were holding questions until the end, so let's let Greg finish and then we can ask.
Sorry, so I I think as an overview, that's what we said today. No definitive impact, but I would say with confidence that this is a significant impact. And one thing I I need to say is that I've always said that one of the most critical things in a development project is schedule and time. And time is money. And time is a lot of money when you're dealing with a bond program as large as this, so. It need, this is not insignificant. The impacts that we are going to experience and then have to mitigate as we move forward with this. The budget, the basic budget been changing the last month, right? It's the same budget that you saw before the budget report that I attached to you. Was adjusted based on just what we paid out on existing contracts. So there were no significant changes there. My biggest concern on my project budget, we have a set amount of money. And we have a plan of how we're going to spend all those dollars based on the seven properties. And what we're facing today is with the time it's delay in is that our monies that we have to spend are going to be spent differently. One of the most significant things about time is cost escalation, inflation. We're all seeing it today in the real world out there. Right now, we estimate seven percent cost estimation is what is currently used in our cost estimates by our estimating firms, both our CMGCs and our cost estimators of just the cost of time. And so when we're doing our cost estimates for the cost of the work, construction costs, FFNE, all of those pieces. We look at and say, when are we going to buy this? We're going to buy this contract in the fall of twenty three or the spring of twenty two, right, whatever that timeframe is. And we say, okay, our cost estimate is based in today's dollars with an escalation factor. We're going to buy it in a year from now, how much escalation do we need to claim? Those are built into every one of our budgets throughout. So as we see this shift and because these are, again, big significant dollars. It's a large cost increase, what does that mean? Well, it doesn't mean we're going to spend more money than we have, it means we're going to buy less with the money we have. So we're going to end up having to make adjustments to our program to fit the budget we have, knowing that we're going to spend more money on increased costs. That dollar amount is very hard to define right now because we don't have as much information. I've started running scenarios because as we look at options, I look at, okay, under this option the purchase piece property we go and develop over here, what do we have to do? Well, there's a time element, there's a redesign element, there's different things. And so it's, we go through this process with each option, we'll try and do a study, a cost study in order to inform DPL and yourselves. And here's what this means, we're going to, you know, change our program and spend our money differently in this fashion. The impacts that we're going to face are not anything new to the industry, right? This is what we deal with and we deal with it all the time, but we are going to spend money on impact costs versus buying more product. As we move through this, so I would express a sense of urgency in your decision making, we have a sense of urgency in bringing you as many options forward as we can as quickly as we can. Because I see what that cost per day is and it's a, it's a number that's, you know, keeps me very concerned. So, and I look at it in that fashion, how much every day this is, so.
What is that?
So, you know, I think that's from a budget standpoint, that's kind of the high points of where we're at. Nothing's changed yet, but we have to face how we're going to manage our money going forward. On the procurement side of things, you know, because we are continuing to move forward, we're not stopping. This is really kind of, and I must step back one sense on the budget and schedule aspects. One of the things that we did do is look at all of our contracts with all of our vendors. And met with legal counsel, went through and give formal suspension notices. And so all work on central has been suspended and stopped with our design team and with our contracting team. Same with downtown bend, there wasn't much activity, but it's formally stopped because it's going to push out. And as well as East Bend. Sun River was suspended, but just to allow us to do the reevaluation. Again, the other three projects, Redmond, Sisters of Lapine are not suspended, they're moving at full speed. On the procurement aspect, one thing that's counters, we've been looking at purchasing agents. And this is for purchasing of all of our FFNE and stuff that we're not buying through our general contractor. And it's a substantial amount of stuff, a lot of furniture and those types of systems, shelving. So we looked at the two different options that we felt that we had. One is to issue an RFP and bring on a purchasing agent, which is a company. I would say most of them are generally located in the larger cities, it would be attracting companies from whether it be Seattle, Portland, down the coast. The other option that we looked at and are considering, would like your input on, is to hire a purchasing manager. And this would be an individual and they would actually come in underneath our contract, under the chase, this is home of representation contract. And it's an individual who we are associated with and build in. They have all of the experience and knowledge and capabilities of managing purchasing as well as move management. And those two kind of go very much hand in hand. By move management, what we're talking about is really managing the process of closing down a library, moving staff and all of this stuff out, letting the contractor come in and build. Then getting all of the new FFNE installed and then moving staff and all of the material back in to reopen. And we do that basically seven times in the life of the bond program. So move management is a big aspect in companies' warehousing. Because we were proposing, as your owners representative, to expand our scope of services and engage a purchasing manager. They would come in under the same terms of contract exist today, our same rate, all of that aspect. When we did have discussions with DPL's legal counsel, just to make sure that, hey, is this allowable under model rules that you've adopted and under good business practices? He said there was nothing there that kept us from doing that. But it's something before we actually move forward with that, wanted to seek your input, we shared this with Todd and his team. So I don't know that there's anything you have to approve today, but one of your thoughts on the concept. On the insurance, the DCIP insurance has been completely bound and is active now. It's really, you know, big items, our biggest items paying bond or insurance premiums this month that's coming up here, so. On the entitlement issues, I think we've talked quite a bit about this. The result of our presentation of the text amendment and comp plan amendment to the city council for the central library. It was evident that that wasn't supported by the city council and ultimately it was then rescinded. And we are now back in our evaluation on there and like I said, we suspended all activity. With city of Redmond, uh as you heard Ruth mention, they did a lot of work on getting the site plans submitted that Redmond requires. And that was submitted in March. Had had really good response so far with the city staff. Uh we've had meetings with senior staff members to understand how they felt. Uh we wanna make sure that we were addressing their needs and what any concerns they have. They've expressed a lot of support for the project. I would say they have said they want the library to stay. They want the library to be right here next to them downtown. And so I think they're a very supportive group, um based on what they've been relaying back to us this past month. No real issues that have come up to date on that, and that's in progress. On the design aspect, as you know, Central, we've stopped, Redmond. We're at the design development phase, so to kind of build a little bit on what we were talking about earlier. With this design development phase, so it's, you know, we've worked through four major phases of designs. Conceptual, which we did, schematic, which we did, and complete. And now design development, and it really does respond. Ruth showed you about ten slides, right? I will tell you, there's about two hundred and some pages of plans, very detailed. There's a lot of information. It's not ready to build yet, right? It's not construction documents. That's that next phase. But it's a very detailed one, and I mentioned that there's a lot of reviews going on, and so. As we evaluate these plans, we have our consultants, I don't know, remember we hired a commissioning agent. And they are deeply involved in review of these plans from the aspects of. All of the mechanical, electrical plumbing system designs, their efficiencies, their, you know, how they're looking at. So they're doing that peer review for us right now with what our design engineers have done and are really looking at. All of those aspects of, and they look at it as they're professional engineers, so they're looking to see the dangers. What they're doing, that approach makes sense and adding really good comments in, uh and then developing the commissioning aspect. Our whole team, as owners representatives, is DPL, are also going through detailed reviews. We had a work session with our design team yesterday where they did a kind of a page turn. We talked about what's on each page and it's more detailed. Staff came in and had a chance to look at the plans and started giving feedback. Um you know, does this work over here or there? You know, some really functional things, how is staff gonna walk through literally through push carts? Uh so that kind of information and evaluation is going on right then. Our CMGC, right, we brought them on board for all of their knowledge. And so they're really digging deep into schedule and cost estimating. So over the next three weeks, they're gonna be developing detailed cost estimates to see how do we compare to our last estimate. Based on the new design. They're gonna be looking at what's going on in the real world out here with cost escalations. For me, maybe I'll turn to CMGC on that project. Very active general contractor in bidding and has got really current data, JLD or cost estimator, same thing. Uh so we're really gonna take a good hard look at how are we bidding within our budget, are we maintaining it? And as part of this evaluation, we're also looking at, are we spending our money wisely? Are there areas that we should reduce back in cost? Are there options, different materials? It's often called value engineering to really look at because it's best to make those decisions now at this phase. Before we go into construction documents. So we, besides looking at saying, do we like the colors and the pictures and the layout? We're also looking at saying, is it cost effective? Is it constructable? Is it bidable? Are the materials that they're specing available in this market today? Uh what's the supply chain telling us on long lead times? We've identified, you know, with lumber, our market spikes up and down and there's availability issues. And we're using a product called GLT. It's a wood system that we're using for all of our flooring and roof structure. And it's a very effective acoustical material that is beautiful because it's wood. It has a long lead time on it, so we're gonna be looking at and saying, hey, we need to get in line and order this early. We talked a bit last month about some pre awards and they were one of those people. We've been talking to them and they said. We can help you on that pre-construction side, but if you want it out here, we need a year's notice, right? So these are things we're finding out now before they become problems. And we have the ability to actually go through and do something about it. And so that's happened. That's gonna go on literally until early May. Here, and uh that's when they'll really kick off into construction documents after real so-called of this in. Nolan Hall goes through the cost report uh with us in detail. That's part of their contract, you know, is to really understand. Cost implications of their design. And where they may need to adjust, they help actually create a lot of alternates. That they've asked the contractor to price, so that way they can look at, hey, we want option A or B. It goes, you know, as we decided to pursue the lead certification. Uh they are looking at all of the alternates that affect our lead certification and our level of achievement, you know. Are we at, we have baseline of silver. They said they really think we can easily get to gold and maybe get to a platinum, right? And so there's that leveled, but it also then turns back into work. Does that mean we're creating more efficient building for a long-term benefit on an operation? So our mechanical engineers doing life cycle cost analysis, those are getting reviewed as well, so. That's what's going on at this point. So it is a major step right here to go from design development into construction documents. And there's a lot of stuff happening. By all of the consultants that district has hired, right, to execute this work. And so I think hopefully that gets you a sense of what we're doing, the whole team. To make sure that we're delivering the best possible product. To in the end. Why it is important also to hear from you that the view, the design that's a whole like you saw. Uh is in keeping with what you're expecting. We're gonna work through all that little minutia and the details. That's where that's at. The other designs, uh Sisters of La Pine are in design development now. That'll continue into May and in May we'll talk about their progress. Uh they're moving right along, including temporary facilities that we've been looking at for them, so that. With each closing of a library, we have a temporary facility for every library uh for them to go to. So those are ongoing and again with East Bend, no activity and with Sun River. We're just doing reevaluations of conceptual designs and there's nothing new at this point. They looked at some options there that we're going through. I think that probably hits all of the high points he might report and some of the things I felt were important to share with you today. Questions?
Okay, right now.
Oh. Oh. Time is money. I guess when you look at that, you also look at the interest that we're accruing on our investment.
Yes.
Bond funds. But how does that offset? What's what are rate of return on the interest right now? I know last month you were saying we got about half a million dollars, so I know it's high.
Yeah, I I don't have the specific return, so Hyper Sandler, who's the manager. They regularly give us an updated estimate of how the investments are performing. And we, you'll see in next month's report because it's come out this recently from them. Uh where there is a significant increase because of interest rates going up and the investments being right good. Uh the caveat there is is that arbitrage discussion, yes? Because we don't understand yet until we've gone through at least our first year's analysis with the arbitrage agent. Whether we'll be limited and have any sense on the interest that we can earn.
Yeah, that's why I was asking our debt attorney, in the first five years, can we still get to keep it? Cause I know five years plus, we're gonna have to return it. But what happened, by the same with the first five years, but she didn't really know either.
Yeah, and you know, in the cost report there. You have. What I've uh done and set up there is under, it should be on page two. On the sources, it tracks the interest on bond investments and it's that five hundred eighty-five thousand that's forecasted. It's on the page two of the cost report, uh not the whole monthly report, but. So that's, yeah, so that's tracking what we're, what we are earning and I update that. Whenever Hyper Sandler issues us an updated statement, because they do that forecast for us. And I take their numbers and put it in there. And then I keep that tracking, it's actually under the reserve contingency. And it uh. I'm looking at my report and it's like, did I miss a line?
Okay, they're putting it under the reserve.
Yeah, it is not planned that we spend at this point. It is sitting there in the reserves. Until like Robert said, we know, can we use it? And at what point, at some point, then we can decide what we do.
The five eighty-five thousand, is that one month?
No, that's estimated for the life.
Oh, for the life?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's based on Hyper Sandler's analysis of the yields to the investments that we've used the bond money for.
Right.
Because they are very conservative investments, because they can't lose money, so they're very small. They're earning seventy-five percent of our treasury. Yeah.
Very good. Yeah. So that was your, I have a question. Where are we investing in?
Yeah.
So there, is that the same as the the local government investment pool or?
It is different from the local, local government investment pool. So so we have a small amount of the overall bond money that's been set aside in the local government investment pool for immediate needs. So that we, so we have that as liquid cash that we transfer for payment of expenses. And then we're tracking those investments with Micro Sandler as they come to maturity, deciding whether to take the cash from the matured bonds. And move it to LGIP or to reinvest it as well.
Yeah, depending upon. Construction expenses.
Right, exactly.
So you're doing analysis for us of the cost of buying a new property. Versus what we're gonna get for proceeds on the sale of our present property. You're gonna look at each one of these properties that you're looking at?
Yeah, well, yeah, not each one. We would look at the ones that we think are. We should consider, uh because some properties we may look at and say, okay. It's not even worth considering this for some reason, right? There were some that are on the list that you guys evaluated previously. And those properties we're relooking at, but we may say, for the reasons we determined last time, this property isn't. A valuable or a usable piece of property. One that comes to mind, just as references, I think there's a property out at Jennifer Ridge. It was a city property, right? But there was a height restriction because of a view corridor from an adjacent property. That said, you can't build but a one-story building. That didn't work, and so that was one of the reasons that property wasn't considered. Now, I don't know if that property is still available today, but we are researching it. But that may be one of those ones where we say, look, we're not gonna spend time on it, but because we can't build a building on. We can't build a giant one-story building on that size acreage. So in that sense, we probably look at which are real viable properties and then do analysis. So the analysis that we do, as your own respect, right, is I look at. And what's the cost of that piece of property? There's purchasing, due diligence cost of that piece of property. There's, what was the scope of work anticipated on the previous property that maybe isn't here? So one is we had anticipated building streets. On the rural property, if we buy a piece of property that is already in a development. And the developer is building the streets, will pay more for the land. But they will actually construct the streets now. We're paying up for our fair share of that.
Yeah.
Believe me, they priced their land to capture all the costs. But so we look at that of, okay, what are some of those costs that will change in our budget? Cause we have a budget to build a building based on the certain size. We look at the time of how long it's gonna take to go through. Finding and selection and contracting of the land to get under contract on a piece of property. And then how long to restart and redo the design. Until we know what piece of property we're dealing with and what the old option is that is selected. We don't know what we're gonna do with our old design. Can we reuse any of it, all of it, or a portion of it? Uh there's a lot of great information and programming that could probably be reused, but the buildings are designed to fit on a site. And so our expectation is that we will see a very different building wherever we go to. Because it's gonna, again, fit to the site. The inside program, massing the size of what we're doing in there is probably very similar. But there's a redesign cost aspect of that. And so we look at that to really look and say, hey, what's the cost of this? And so that's the evaluation that we do, you know, at that level. We don't really have an impact on construction loan or that cost of money because of we have bond funds. And so it's really more about the execution of the work that we do.
Should, are there any other part?
Yeah, I I just wanted to, wondered, you were talking about the cost per day of delay that keeps you up. So do you have that?
Yeah.
In approximate, what is that number?
It's twenty, a little over twenty-three thousand dollars a day. And what that is.
A day.
Per day. But that is, that is the escalation cost. On top of our construction costs for Central and Downtown Bend, they both would push. The escalation cost on our FFNE purchasing. Uh there's a small escalation on design cost because what we're gonna do is we're gonna push our design. Work outside of the limits of the contract. And so it would be subject to adjustment at that time or executing their contract in the future. Those are the big items. Those are the big tickets. That doesn't capture the cost of redesigning, but it's that. Back to time. And that was something I looked at, so I used our real cost estimates that we have. And our escalation cost then. You know, both our two cost estimators, I said, they felt was a realistic number to be using, which we're using in our current estimate. So I tried to use all of our known data. So that I could say this to you with a level of uh. You know, confidence.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, because it's, I'm looking at my crystal ball, right, the best I can. But I think that's what I need to do is to tell you, because, and I say this because I really do feel this is. It's an urgent situation to resolve, to get us back on track and get us going forward. Because once we have a direction forward, then our focus is gonna change to. How do I minimize the impact to us and deliver the product that you want? That, you know, is in, you know, expected.
Right, and I guess my, what keeps me up at night, many things keep me up at night. But um that will go forward with these projects. As the clock continues to tick. And and depending on the information we get about the arbitrage. And, and depending on the information we get about the arbitrage. That the loss of money will outpace. Greatly uppace the interest we are accruing. And it will sub, it will reduce the cost available for the last projects to the point that we cannot. Build what we said we were gonna build. And then that result of that will be that Redmond has a new library and all the branches are refurbished and we can't do. Anything at bed, or I mean, we can't do.
Yeah, I will say, as I looked at this and said, okay. If we experience one year impact. Right, and that's saying, we go out, we find an alternate site, but we continue with the same program. Our building will have to be modified to fit the budget. Our same, we have the same amount of total dollars available, we can't get more. Therefore, because things are gonna cost more, we have to build less. So when we talk, you know, what does that mean, well, in my mind, I'm saying, okay. Maybe it is a smaller bill, maybe it's a simpler bill. From an architectural standpoint, there's ways to reduce costs, but we're gonna have to reduce costs. And I think the two projects that get impacted the most are Central and Downtown Bend. I think that the four branches, the budgets are there, they're set aside, that you can do. As much or as little with them. I, but I think at the same time, when you're looking at, hey, this is a. Big picture, the big picture number estimate of a year impact on these projects. And this varies greatly based on the land. And this was done under an option for purchasing a new property. It can swing anywhere from fourteen up to twenty million total impact. So it's, this is a big.
In addition to the.
No, that includes the escalation. Uh, but that's redesign cost, that's purchasing cost. We don't factor in, uh, activity with the existing property, uh, disposing of it. Because that probably won't be allowed under the law, right? And that's. It will reimburse the district, not the bond fund.
Right.
So we take the expense out. We, but any sale isn't something that we can consider.
Right.
Greg, we had, I know you've put out a lot of RFPs and, um, and there were contracts signed. When you had to shut those down, um, are there penalties for not abiding by our contract? Or potential lawsuits, because we now are not abiding by a contract?
No, we actually have protections under the contracts in order to suspend work at our will. Uh, now, so I don't think that there's, uh, the threat that they can. Come after the district or stopping the work, and what we did is, we didn't terminate any contract. We put him in a suspension order. And we're allowed to suspend work while we figure out, hey, what is our next step in going forward? Now, where we are subjected to potential cost increases is. There's a cost of shutting down and then the cost of restarting. And then there's a cost of, even if we were doing the exact same work again, but we're doing it a year later. Or some period later, then they can make a claim or increase cost because of that time.
Right.
Their contract is defined by time, does that answer your question, buddy?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Can you just talk about what, what's going on in Sun River, what's the evaluation that's being needed?
So we're looking at, we were looking at how we, uh, approach the entry. And, you know, what we do there, so the renovation of all the interior, that really isn't anything. It's a matter of that front entrance.
Okay.
And, uh, what's the right approach to dealing with that?
Okay.
And that has to do with how that little wing comes out and how it's tucked back in there.
Right.
And is it? We had ambitions of, hey, can we rebuild that area, how feasible is that? And so we're, it's kind of a gut check to say, okay. Are we open on a massive can of worms, or is it creating value, or we just spending money to spend money?
Right.
To give, re, making sure that we're doing the right thing, and so, uh, that's what we're looking at. Sharing with EPL to let them say, that still adds value to the operation and to the.
Let me get straight, did I understand you say? The proceeds for the sale of the Obie Riley property. Cannot go back into the purchase of the new property under the bond?
So we need to get the, the bond council read on that one. Yeah.
Because we did say it came out of the bond fund, reversed ourselves that.
That's right. So if, if bond council comes back and says that the proceeds cannot go toward construction, uh, uh, costs or costs. We would have to then back out that reimbursement that we put onto the.
All right, so then we would have to back it out, purchase this and then put it back in.
Functionally, functionally, it would still be a, yeah, a, a transfer and then that money would be available. It would just be a question of, there was any other gain on the land sale? The, the question of, of if we sold it for more than we thought it, does that, does that go towards? Money that we can use for construction, or would it go toward backing to the reserve fund that we used to purchase the land? And that's what we need.
Yeah, so we won't lose on it unless we sell the property for less.
Right.
Right, that's why they're, we're going forward, it's a matter of shifting.
Yeah.
But any profit possibly on the sale, we have to go into our fund again, which we. Our general fund, which we then use for FFNE's head. We want to add to it, so some way we could put it back into construction if we wanted to.
Yeah, pending bond council blessing.
Exactly, that's good. Are we, are we planning on having some formal charrettes? Before the final design? For Redmond and I guess also for the line and its systems.
We, we.
Are any in-person charrettes?
Yes.
Well, we are gonna have those, we have virtual.
We have virtual.
Yeah.
We did not do.
Are we planning on doing it in person at the communities, at the libraries?
Not at this point, no.
Not at this point, yeah.
Any further questions?
I'll comment on your report. I would, I would feel more comfortable. Report it on your language. There are several places in the report where you said, uh. The Ben City Council made a decision to reject us. And secondly, they didn't. So if you correct those, you say they, on page three, I guess, it says, indicated they would not support. But then you said, denied their request, so. You can't say they denied our request if we, we were true before they did the final findings.
I can correct.
I'd write those.
Yeah, because they did not vote on it, they did not deny it, but they strongly indicated they will not support it, so.
Yeah.
I'll make sure that it does take that, because that is actors.
Yeah, because if that gets back to city council. Well, because, you know, anything we do, permit, and we'll go back.
So, uh. Greg, do you need? Action at this time on your options regarding the FFNE participating in it?
No, more just if you guys feel comfortable with the Chase Mixes submitting a proposal. To provide a purchasing manager. Under our contract, it'd be amendment to our contract, and you would actually, in, within our project budget, we have funds allocated. Every, uh, work package for purchasing, and so it won't change, it's just. How we're contracting for those services. So I think knowing that you guys were comfortable with that approach versus us going out and trying to hire another company, I. I think some of the pros and cons a little bit, maybe to show you, you know, if we hire a purchasing agent, they're gonna, like I said, probably not be located. Locally, they will definitely help the management of purchasing of all of the materials. Uh, they're not as, uh. Helpful on the move management aspects, and so this is why we felt, uh, we have a person who. We know and does this for their living.
Right.
And, you know, we could actually be more effective. And as we've kind of stretched the schedule here, you know, we were at one point with Redmond and Central highly stacked. We saw an opportunity to buy a lot of FFNE at one time. And I, I really see that now being spread apart, and so I think this will make us more nimble. And able to, uh, really kind of adjust to meet the needs. And have this person on board to really do multiple tasks of FFNE purchasing management as well as move management.
Okay, Todd, you have any input on this?
Uh, yeah, I think it's actually a good plan, um, we actually met. Potential person to do it, and I think this can be a more hands-on approach for us, rather than, as Greg said, somebody remote. And they also have a lot of experience in moving. Greg, Greg pointed out, we are going to have to. We're gonna have to do a lot of moves between temporary locations and getting out of the building, temporary location, out of the temporary location. Into a building, there's, it's a lot of logistics involved, so I think that'll be, you know, possible.
Do you wanna just poll the board and see consensus?
So let me get it straight, what you're saying is. This individual, this person, person, do both FFNE and the move management or?
Yes.
So previously, we were looking at the architectural firm having to improve that we do the FFNE's.
Uh, no, we were looking at going now to, uh, secure a.
Separately.
Yeah, they're, they're called purchasing agents.
Yeah. So this one, we're combining FFNE with move management.
Yes.
I wanted to say, when I read your report, I had a question mark next to that portion of your report and was wondering about it. I think it, the moving portion being part of it makes so much sense, rather than putting that on the staff or. Anyway, I, I'm totally for that idea.
I agree.
Well, in our budget right now, it's budgeted at a half a million dollars across all of them. So it's, it's at that magnitude.
Just, you were doing the same?
Uh, we'll figure out an exact cost estimate, uh, that we would submit, and that will actually be your formal approval to authorize Todd to execute. Uh, our contract amendment, we'll go through and look at, you know, we already have established labor rates. Uh, that were established as part of the original RFP in our contract.
Yeah.
And so we'll just be looking at, because it's not a full-time position, there's times where, you know, so. We need, right, sometimes a lot of help and then like, or anything, so. Um, I'll go through and literally do a plain action of how I see that and what we think that cost would be. Our cost is been, you know, is set at a fixed fee per month, that's just average, and we'll end up doing. That same thing and presenting that to Todd. Uh, but I would expect that it will be within the budget that's already established, that it won't exceed that based on. Before I even presented this to Todd or really considered it myself, I looked at it and said, does this make financial? Sense to the project, right? Can we get more out of hiring the individual and just bring her into our team? Versus bringing on another company, and I think we can. Do more with the dollars we have by hiring a person, and that's when I decided I need to present this, uh, to Todd, and then I wanted to. Share with you, and it feels like you guys are in support of it, then I would actually do the formal proposal.
Right.
And it'd come up at next month's meeting.
Right, so Buddy, do you have input?
Uh, I agree with it, especially if, um, it will speed things along, the twenty-three thousand dollars a day hurts. Um, so if this will help the process, by all means, I think, go forth.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I too.
Okay, perfect, that was all, I, I really wanted to have this chance to talk to you.
Right, yeah, no, I, I think that makes perfect sense, it's, uh, and having it be an integrated person that's. Going along with all the rest of the things that's progressing. That's great. Okay, so we're back now to, um. Considering the Redmond library designs, conceptual designs. So, um, based on what we've heard. Does someone want to make a motion on approving the site plans and major components?
I move to approve the overall site plans and major components as outlined in the architect's presentation. Of the Redmond Library Facility.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Host. Staying?
I abstain.
Could you give the reason for that abstention?
Uh, because I'm not thoroughly convinced that we need to tear down the library. Instead of having another library.
Say that again?
Yeah, I didn't understand. I, I couldn't hear you, Ray, uh, could you speak louder?
I'm not thoroughly convinced that we need to demolish the existing library and build on just, you know, build right here, a new one. Versus remodeling this one and building another one.
Okay. All right, well, the motion passes. Four to nothing with one abstention. Uh, now we have an education, please, are we?
Uh, you're a budget committee?
No, budget committee, I'm sorry, all right, so we have one applicant, is that correct?
We have one applicant, there is, uh, Betsy Tucker, who has served on the committee and is asked to re-up. And she is our own man.
I would entertain a motion on that.
I'll do that, I move to appoint Betsy Tucker to the issues public library budget committee for the three-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Where's?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Host, motion passes unanimous. Okay, now we're on to, uh, City of Bend, potential property tax exemptions.
Okay, we've got Alison Platt and E. Frayley with us, and we have some others with you as well.
Yeah, um, can everyone hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, I'm using headphones, so. Uh, we are joined this, this afternoon by Counselor Campbell as well, and we're here to talk to you about some. Property tax exemption programs that the City of Bend is considering to support some of our housing goals. And so I will turn it over to Barb or Counselor Campbell, actually, to kind of kick off, uh, the. And so I will turn it over to Barb or Counselor Campbell actually to kind of kick off uh this, this topic. And then we have a presentation and that we want to walk through with you all afterwards.
Thank you, thank you, Allison, and thank you so much um to the library board. Thank you for the time and thank you for your service to our community. You, we love our libraries so much. The one thing, there's no question, is that everybody loves the library. Um, I am here today because um we, in Bend, we have this kind of strange fragmented system of government. And I believe that it is so important to our taxpayers, to our constituents, that we work together, that we cooperate. And by that, I don't mean that we agree on all things all the time. Um, I'm honestly trying to address the elephant that's in the room. That, you know, most recently, you were coming to city council with a request and that request was denied. But I believe that what the voters really need from us is to put aside whatever disagreements we have and move on to the next issue with an open mind and an open heart. And that's why I decided that I myself would be here today. Um, not to try and explain these tax credits to you. It's very complicated and that's why we have our excellent staff in order to explain exactly what it is that we're asking. But I'm here to talk to you about the affordability challenges that we all have. Um, and that's exactly what you've been talking about for the last hour, is affordability. And how can you deliver on the promises that you've made to your constituents? And that is exactly what we are trying to do. And what we are finding is that there's one piece of um our being able to afford to do what we have promised. And the one piece that we're here to talk to you about today is labor. Are the labor costs that are escalating. Labor costs are escalating now and I believe it's going to continue into the future because the money has arrived. You all were successful in passing your bond measure. We were successful in passing our bond. And there's a federal infrastructure package that has been passed. This means that we're all going to be competing for the same labor. And the cost of that labor is going to continue to go up. So we believe we need to address that issue through housing. To try and make it possible for people who work in our area to actually live in the communities where they work. That is an incredibly important value for us on this city council. Is that our excellent librarians can actually afford to live in Bend. So we are here today to ask you to sign on for some specific tax incentives that are available to us to help with that housing affordability problem. Um, the tax incentives can, um, are important because we can use them to incentivize housing in specific, in particular. To incentivize housing in an area where we just have never gotten housing. And so one of those areas in specific is the core area of Bend. That is that area between, basically between Franklin and Greenwood and then in between the Parkway and Third Street. I've lived in Bend for thirty years and I can tell you that that is an area that is almost frozen in time while the rest of the city has just exploded. And we would like to use these incentives to get housing in particular in the core area where it's just perfect for housing. It's close for people to be able to be in jobs. It makes perfect sense for our transportation system. But it just hasn't happened. So we believe that these tax incentives can get that kind of development to happen. And what that means is even though we are asking you to stay for twenty years at a level frozen right now. At the end of that twenty years, your tax base will pop all the way up to the new level. And the new level will be because of the development that happened because of the incentives. So we are hoping that you will sign on um in order to, again, to get needed housing. The other thing I would like to say that is important to me is to know what we're talking about when we're talking about affordable housing. Because of the homelessness crisis that's affecting our community in all of central Oregon. Folks generally, when we think of affordable housing, I think they think of housing that we are hoping will help people get off the streets frankly. But our affordable housing strategies include housing for folks who are making all the way up to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. The, the crisis in Bend is so severe that we honestly are subsidizing market rate housing in some cases. So that's the piece that I think is important for you. Is that these subsidies might actually make it possible for a librarian to live in Bend. For someone who works, you know, as a groundskeeper for the libraries. For those folks to be able to afford housing, people who really are making a full, the full um area median income. Right now, they can't afford to live in Bend. And that is what we want. We want our own employees. We want your employees. We want park service employees. All to have the opportunity to live in the community where they serve the public frankly. So thank you so much. Thank you again for letting me be here. Thank you for your service to our community. And I will let our excellent staff now explain exactly how these tax incentives work. Thank you again.
Thanks Barb. Um, so just to clarify, so I am Allison Platt and I work for this, for the City of Bend, obviously. And I oversee our core area um tax and commit finance district. And I'm joined this evening um by Amy Fraley, or I guess not this evening, I'm used to night presentations this afternoon. But Amy Fraley, and then I did want to mention that we do also have our newly appointed community and economic development director, Colin Stevens. Here, if there are any um questions for him this afternoon as well. I'm going to share our screen. Okay, can everyone still, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Um, so today, I'm, and we'll try to go through this um as quick as possible and we can always follow up with more information with your staff. Um, but kind of go over the tax exemption programs that we are considering here at the City of Bend. Um, get some of your input on those, answer any questions and then communicate kind of what the next steps are for bringing this forward for council consideration adoption and the best ways to get the library's input into these programs if you'd like to kind of submit more formal testimony to our city council as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amy to talk about the first two exemption programs and how we define affordability in the City of Bend.
Hello, my name is Amy Fraley. I'm the Affordable Housing Coroner for the City of Bend. And some of you may have seen this slide before. We've been using it for about a year. And if you look in the upper right-hand corner, the very first thing that we would update would be the median home price, which in March was seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So what we have here is a series of assumptions, bottom right-hand corner, about what folks can afford in certain income. So typically, affordable rental housing down on the bottom left for a family of four is a household income of forty-eight thousand two hundred and forty. Which would mean if you're following the general guideline, that you can spend thirty percent of your gross income on housing. They could afford twelve hundred or two hundred and twenty-two thousand. And I've lived in Bend for my whole life and I cannot remember the last time we had a home price of one hundred and twenty-two thousand. If you go up to eighty percent, this is where folks could typically buy a home through Habitat, eighty percent and lower at a home price of two ninety-nine and their rental prices would be around sixteen hundred. So when we're talking about middle income, we're looking at that hundred up to a hundred and twenty percent, which is that ninety-six thousand four hundred and eighty. And the typical home price that they could afford with thirty percent guideline would be that four fifty-two. And Allison, I'm not sure if it brings up the rent prices over on the right-hand side if you click through. We just went ahead and pulled a couple of rental examples that are current. And you can see that folks that are close to the six figures can barely afford a one-bedroom, one-bath. And this is the breakdown of the taxing districts. Um, folks, you can see the library is down three point five in the bottom right-hand corner. And we'll be talking um in the first two examples that fifty-one percent of the taxing jurisdictions need to approve the exemption in order for everyone to be included. So in our community, that would be the school district and the city of Bend. Nonprofit tax exemption for affordable housing is exactly what it sounds like. It's for a five oh one C three or a five oh one C four created by the legislature in nineteen eighty-five. It would be approved by the city council through ordinance. There's an annual application that is kind of burdensome, is what we've heard from other communities for the nonprofit. But it gives the city an opportunity to look at that example or that project every single year and decide whether or not they want to grant the exemption. Exemption length is determined by the city, so it can last as long as the property is affordable. Uh, the work group is recommending that it be allowed anywhere in the city. It's partial. It can be bare land and there's no unit minimum. So what we would hope to see is duplexes and triplexes that would be infill in some of the smaller lots that could be owned by nonprofit, excuse me. And one of the neat things about this exemption is though it's limited to those folks that are at sixty percent, that first year, the forty-eight thousand for a family of four. They can go ahead and go up to eighty percent that second year, which means that just because you earn more money and become more stable as a family, you don't have to find new housing. And like I mentioned, a hundred percent uh exemption if it's approved by fifty-one percent of the jurisdictions. And we pulled an example here. Um, Kovo would be one of our possible partners that could take advantage of this exemption. And this is a duplex over on DeKalb that came online, I believe, August thirty-first. You can see that last year that they were paying that fourteen seventy-five in property taxes. And by providing this service to homeless members of our community, they're actually paying more. And why that three thousand six hundred may not seem like a lot. Kovo wants everyone to know that, that it means a great deal to them and it can make the difference between developing a property or not developing a property. You can see here, Ally's put together a table that breaks down how much, in theory, if this was for twenty years, it would cost each of the districts and the annual impacts. And if you look at the library down there, it's three point five percent. So it would be a hundred and eighty-three dollars a year right now for this duplex. Is there a question or any questions about the first couple of slides before we go on to middle income?
No.
All right. Middle income tax exemption. So this is fairly new. It was developed in two thousand seventeen. And it goes up to the income range of a hundred and twenty. So it's that ninety-six or eighty for a household of four. It's available only for newly constructed or rehabilitated rental property. You can only use it once in the lifetime of a development and it's set to sunset in twenty twenty-seven. And we're going to recommend that we don't use it right now. And so what the work group did is it looked at Tillamook County, which is the only jurisdiction or the only government that's adopted the middle housing. And the exemption, no one in their community has used it either. So whereas nonprofit and M U P T that you'll hear about next are used across the state, no one is using middle income because the statute is too restrictive. It is very, um, it just doesn't work for Bend. And so Ally can explain the tables here far better than I can, so I will hand it over.
Um, great, thanks, Amy. So yeah, we originally started with four different exemption programs that we were evaluating, narrowed it down to three. And this is sort of the, the one that we would, we would like to pursue um as an organization. But we feel like um the way that the state statute is written precludes us from making this exemption um usable without giving too much to the development community. And so this is one that we're going to be asking council when we go to them for a work session on April twentieth. Um, to ask if we can kind of get their authority to lobby for changes to the legislation um that guides this middle income exemption. And with that, the, the last exemption program that we'll talk to you about today um is probably the most complex. And I'll be presenting on that one. So it's the multiple unit property tax exemption program. Um, this program, very similarly to the nonprofit, the program itself is adopted by a city council ordinance. Um, but each individual development project would need to be approved by resolution. And in order for all of the, um, in order for the exemption to apply to the entire tax rates, so all of the taxing districts. Um, you know, the full tax dollar, we would need fifty-one percent of the combined levy of the taxing districts to agree. So again, the school district and the city essentially. Uh, but that doesn't mean that we don't care about um all the other taxing districts input into the development of this program or as individual projects are approved. Um, this program itself by state statute is really intended to be focused on core areas and transit-oriented areas. And then really intended to incentivize addition, you know, increase in housing unit development, so multiple unit um properties. It's not intended for hotels or motels. Um, we would actually recommend that even short-term rentals be precluded from being included in projects that take advantage of this exemption program. Um, the improvements, um, so the way that the exemption for this one works is instead of applying you know, one hundred percent to the property taxes, um, both the land and the structures, this one only applies to the structures. And in most cases, it's only going to apply to the residential portion of the project. So let's say um a mixed-use building wanted to take advantage of this exemption program. And they did the entire ground floor as commercial uses, similar to the Hickson Development Project that we saw over on Fourteenth Street and Simpson Avenue. Um, their entire, you know, their whole building, um, only the building portion would be exempted and only the value that is for the residential improvement. So the commercial portion of that project would not be exempt from taxes if they were going to take advantage of this program. Um, unless, and the only time the commercial portion of the project is exempted is if it's required as part of the development requirements. And in most of the places that we're considering applying this exemption program, we don't expect that to um be true. Um, so I think I covered everything on this slide. Um, so the way that we're envisioning that this program to be set up in Bend um is again, that we would focus sort of on the city's core areas and I'll talk about specifically where we're looking at. Um, we would require that developments have three or more units, not include any hotels, motels or short-term vacation rentals. Um, that they would be multi-story projects, so at least two stories or higher. So you really want to use this program in particular to help incentivize the type and scale of urban development that we um feel is necessary to accommodate our future housing need within our um central core opportunity areas. Uh, there is a ability for the city to require a third-party pro forma review of developments that take advantage of this exemption program to demonstrate their financial need for the exemption. Um, we've heard kind of mixed reviews on whether that third-party review is necessary. Our work group did not feel that a third-party review was absolutely necessary, but we've heard from several other taxing districts that they would like the city to, um, to include that third-party review. Either way, the staff, staff would recommend that we receive at least a pro forma that needs to be reviewed, either at the staff level or through, or through a third-party review um agency. Again, the commercial portion is only eligible for the exemption. Again, the commercial portion is only eligible for the exemption if required as part of the public benefit or as required as part of the development. And so we started looking at this program really in our central core to identify what areas we would include. And this is ultimately what we've landed on is that we would include the entire core area TIF district, except for the mixed riverfront zoning, our central business district zone, which is essentially our downtown area, some high-density zoning that's adjacent to the core area along Fourth Street and Irving Avenue. So this brown area on the map, as well as developments that utilize a new development code kind of pathway that we have that was in response to House Bill thirty-four fifty, which allows up to forty acres of commercially zoned land within a quarter mile of transit to be developed as standalone residential. And just to kind of give you a sense of where that could potentially take place, this is a map that shows eligible properties for that urban dwelling site code or HP thirty-four fifty effort. So not all of the, not all of these development parcels would take advantage of that development standard, but this is where it could take place. In, in exchange for this exemption program or as part of the requirements in order to qualify for this exemption program, we would require that developments meet specific public benefits. And so this is the list of public benefits that we're currently considering requiring in order for a development to be eligible for this exemption because we do recognize that this is offering a tax abatement to market rate projects, but really intended to incentivize the type and scale of development that we're having a hard time seeing, even though we've zoned areas of the city to allow this type of development since two thousand sixteen. So in exchange for the exemption, we would be asking developers to at least meet one of these priority public benefits, which are really focused on housing at kind of deed-restricted levels to either middle income or our definition of a capital A affordable housing, offering childcare facilities, providing an open space dedication to our park district or incorporating some pretty significant energy efficiency standards or offering some type of publicly accessible plaza or park space. In addition to that, they would need to meet at least two public benefits on this other list. And so this is kind of where we're headed and really interested if the library district has additional requests for this list. I know, you know, we do have common meeting rooms open to the public, which I know has been identified as a need, but through some of your studies as you've looked at developing library space. So I'm happy to take some specific requests for public benefit requirements from the library board if you have any today or prior to future council actions. I did want to give an example of kind of the sense of scale that this exemption could have. And do you want to reiterate that if, if a project were to take advantage of this exemption within the core TIF area, that your, your budgets would continue to not be impacted? It would really be, that impact of the exemption would really be isolated to the core TIF budget, which impacts me more than you all. But we still want to be mindful of it. So this is an example of a, of a pretty extremely large development project that could take advantage of this exemption. So I really see this being on the high end of anything that we would see take advantage of this program. So this is a proposed development across the street from the box factory. That's supposed to be six stories with over three hundred units of three hundred and twelve residential units and ground floor commercial uses. And over the life, you know, if we were to offer them a ten-year tax exemption, taking advantage of this program on just, that would apply to just their residential improvements, that would account for about eighty-six and a half percent of their forecasted taxes that they would be, that would be abated for the ten-year period, which would translate to about an eleven point nine million dollar impact to the core TIF district. And you'll see that none of the, none of the other overlapping taxing districts are impacted by this because this project falls within the core TIF area. And so it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar impact to the core TIF area annually. And this shows just kind of a graphic of that. So you'll see that the frozen base that continues to be distributed to the overlapping taxing districts, including the library district, is maintained. We're still able to collect tax increment from this project because only eighty-six point five percent of the project is being abated. So it's more taxes that we generate if this project moves forward than if it doesn't. But it is a pretty significant exemption for this project in particular. This is an example of a much smaller project that could take advantage of this exemption program. And I wanted to showcase this one as being a project outside of the core area. So this is kind of a smaller apartment project on a small lot. This project is actually on the west side in an area we're not considering for the exemption program, but was a recent multifamily development that I thought could apply. So you'll see a project of this scale would have about a three hundred and sixty dollar annual impact to the park district budget over that ten-year period. It's important to note that these exemption programs don't have as significant of an impact to the school district because the school district is funded on a per pupil state allocation. So while they appear to have the largest impact of this exemption program, they actually have one of the smallest impacts from the exemption program. Then just kind of last point to really hone in for you all is that we are considering kind of monitoring or some caps or time expirations for these programs. So we would recommend that we do annual reporting on these programs to the taxing districts and to the community. For the nonprofit tax exemption, we're not recommending any termination or limitation on this program other than the state statute expiration in two thousand twenty-seven. That's when we would stop that. If that state statute wasn't extended, we would stop accepting new applications at that time. But for the MPT program, we're recommending a review after every five hundred units that are approved, a sort of a mandatory review, and that we would terminate the program in eight years. So in two thousand thirty, we would stop accepting new applications to this program, even though the state statute expires in two thousand thirty-two. So we have heard a lot of questions from the taxing districts. One question in particular that we've heard that I thought would be relevant to you all is whether these exemptions impact bonds. And we clarified with the assessor's office that these exemptions don't impact, they have some impacts on bonds, but not in necessarily negative ways. So I wanted to kind of break it down. So they, they don't impact the amount of money that you collect from your bonds. So the amount of your bond stays the same. But if there is lower revenue that's being collected in the overall area that you're bonding for, the rate at which your bond rate gets applied would change. So that I know that you all sometimes do your bond rates. You know, you forecast what you're going to take out to issue debt to, to cover your projects based on the rate that you're applying your bonds. So I do want to say there might be some impacts to the rates, but we're not anticipating them to be very significant. But that is a question that we've heard from taxing districts that I did want to touch base on. We have continued to work with your staff to answer questions and are happy to follow up with them to answer any specific questions you have following this presentation and have done some FAQs with them already. And then just last note of kind of how to stay involved. And so we are planning to go to council on April twentieth with a work session on this item to get direction from them on whether to bring those two exemption programs forward for adoption. And if we get that direction, we would return to council on May eighteenth to host two public hearings, one for the nonprofit exemption and one for the MPT, the multiple unit property tax exemption. And if those were to pass that evening, we expect that these programs would be in effect in July and we could start taking applications for exemptions for the two thousand twenty-four tax year. So we would accept applications that would be due by December first and we would submit that documentation to the assessor's office by April first in two thousand twenty-three. That, I'll turn it over to any questions.
Do you members of the board have any questions for the city?
Yeah. How does this differ from an urban renewal district? Is it just that it's the same type of tax exemption that has to be applied to multiple unit housing?
And so to you all, it's a probably pretty similar impact in a lot of ways. But it's, it's just, it's a different mechanism through state statute. This one, an urban renewal district kind of sets a frozen base that you continue to collect a tax exemption, abates, abates projects annually for a ten-year period of time. The urban renewal district is a thirty-year period that you're receiving a pause on taxes before you get that return back. And the, the way that we can use those funds, so the urban renewal district is collecting funds to be invested into the district, whereas the exemption is just, we don't collect those funds at all. So we're not, we're not promising to do anything with them. They're just not collected. We, we, the, the development gets to keep those tax dollars instead of us collecting them in some way or form.
Yeah, a question on there, one of the questions was, can the multiple unit tax exemption be incentivized for our library staff?
And so whether we can kind of reserve some of the housing units for your library staff. Yeah, that's, it's a great question and we've heard it from a couple of our other districts. I know that we are researching this question pretty heavily because we are looking into dedicating some specific housing units as part of the Department of State Lands Development Project. But typically there are fair housing limitations to being able to do that, especially because we're a pretty homogenized community. Fair housing really tries to aim to prioritize housing for, you know, significantly underserved populations. So at this time, we don't really see a path forward to reserve any of these units specifically for district employees, even if we kind of recognize the, the benefit of that. So right now our answer sort of no unless we do some significant legal research or big lift to change that. And Amy might know more. I'm not in the fair housing world. That's my understanding.
You did an excellent job, Allison. And I know that this is one of the middle housing especially, that the chamber is looking into that and putting some legal resources behind exploring disparate impact in conjunction with their housing.
Okay.
So we're working on it.
Any other questions? Okay, I think it'd be helpful if we can get a copy of your slides because you presented a lot of information. It'd be great to have it to review if that'd be possible for you to send those to Todd.
I'll send those right away.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, and then if we can get, and if the library does want to submit any sort of formal testimony to council, it'd be great to get that by the April twentieth work session, but if not, definitely by the May eighteenth. Kind of tentative adoption timeline.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So.
Allison, can you quit sharing your screen?
I guess.
Oh, you got it?
Okay, so Todd has asked me to move up our executive session. We're out of order a little bit while we still have Jennifer in the room. And she's a key player in this. So we're going to be discussing the executive session to review the performance of the library director now and then go back to the regular order of the meeting, if that's okay with everybody. Okay, the District's Public Library District will conduct an executive session to review the performance of the library director as pursuant to ORS one ninety-two point six six zero two I. So I will adjourn the regular meeting and we are now in executive session. Yes. Okay, I'm going to call us back into regular session. And I would entertain a motion from someone, anyone regarding.
I will move that we extend Todd's contract for another year at current salary. Extend the rolling one for another year. With a bonus of two thousand dollars for this year. And it gets the same hold of course as negotiated.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Bear a second. All those in favor? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go back to the regular.
Don't we have to do the executive session again?
Well, we are going to. We have PLA conference reports, so we'll keep these brief. And I'll go first, buddy, if that's okay?
That's great.
Okay, so I have been, I have not finished my report and I will circulate a written report to you. There were some things from the conference app that I wanted to incorporate in this and it's like eleven pages long. So I didn't think you really needed to read eleven pages based on the sessions that I attended. But the PLA conference in Portland, I thought was really excellent. The quality of the presentations, I'm always amazed, is just uniformly super high. And so they have a lot of really good current information on digital book pricing and the, all the controversies around that and what's being done on a national level to try to standardize the pricing for digital books and get some uniformity and how the publishers offer their digital books so that the library rates are not jacked up as much as they are. So there's a lot of pending legislation, but they've got big working groups nationally that are working on this issue. So that was, that was really a good session. I went to one on building the board, which was excellent. I will pass along information for that. There were a lot of censorship sessions on, on what's going on nationally, what, what legal action is being taken because that's been something that's hit a lot of libraries, starting with school libraries, but it's also led over into public libraries and how to prepare for that and, and how to deal with it when it happens. There was a really good session on creating meaningful connections within a hybrid environment, which was really excellent. There was, it went on innovative spaces for community learning, tools and measures for a sustainable library system and for buildings specifically. So the sessions were excellent and then the vendor opportunities were really good. We had some good conversations with a lot of equipment vendor, vendors, particularly kiosks and, and different alternative delivery systems. And I know Todd was meeting, I mean, everybody was meeting with those people. So we got a lot of good information on what's currently out there and it was interesting. Cynthia, how much it evolved from just in the last two years. I mean, it's, it's changing, that's a field that is changing rapidly. I did have a really good one-on-one conversation with, and now I don't have the lady's name in front of me. I have her card, but she's the principal designer for the early learning space that was done at Fort Vancouver. She's, and they've done multiple ones all over the United States. And she described their process of how they work with libraries to design, design spaces that are specific to that community. And so she, and I know that other people from the district were talking with her as well, but she provided some really good information on that as well. So that's, and so as I said, I'll send you out the written one. Yes.
Can I go?
Yes, okay. Well, here I've got. And one's for Todd too. So I did the PLA online, which was very different. The, actually, I thought the classes were going to be the same, but I had different classes and it was very good. I get to participate and listen to the keynotes and the gal who opened it was amazing. I really enjoyed her. The things that I, the bullets are the actual, the first bullets of the actual class workshops I took. The first one was an innovative spaces for community learning. And a lot of this was not applicable to us because they had fourteen thousand square feet for their maker space and they have a professional. fourteen thousand square feet for their maker space, and they have a professional kitchen. It was unbelievable. But I did take away a couple of things that I thought, you know, if we do get to have a maker space, I thought the idea of using your library card to check out the maker space, and that was one of the ways that they collected data on the usage of it. I also thought the idea that anybody who goes in for specific areas, they had to actually go through a training in utilizing any of the equipment, and they had an age limit. They had done a lot of research to figure out what was the best age limit to go in without a parent being there. The next one that I really found fascinating was the, after the collection diversity audit. I ended up with more questions about our own library system, and I really probably should send those to Emily, but it was fascinating. It was one of the best workshops I did. I learned, I just learned so much by listening to them, and as I was, okay, I need to ask this, what about this? So that's what the majority of my boards are. And then I did two things on kind of diversity and inclusion. And one of them was specifically, how do we get there? I felt like the majority of things that were being introduced and talked about are things that are already happening at DPO, but it was interesting. And then the other one was more geared towards boards. It was welcoming everyone, creating, I spelled creating wrong, sorry about that, creating equitable and inclusive library policies. And it was more looking at, and it was presented by an attorney and remember what the other gal was. Anyway, and they talked about making sure that the policies that a board puts together are not keeping people away, but making sure that everyone feels like they're welcome. And I really liked the one thing when they said error on the side of yes in the policy. And I thought that was a really good point. I liked that. And then the last thing was kind of what you were talking about again, and it was talking about intellectual freedom. And one of the best people on the staff and I, or on the panel, I don't know if you know, and Peter Coyle, he's the director of the Sacramento Public Library System, and he was, he was outstanding. And he kept hitting home with, don't take book challenges as, don't take them personally, don't take them as it's something I bad against the library said, take them as a challenge to yourself to be able to say, this is why we want to go on providing this book. And I really thought that was beneficial. And then one of the big things he said was the public library system needs right now to be so supportive of the public schools, because it is the public schools that are getting hit the hardest. Anyway, that was my take. It was, it was interesting going through the schedules, because there were things that Cynthia could go to that we didn't have available to us, and vice versa. I mean, it was weird. I didn't realize it was going to be that way, because I see a session. So Buddy?
I, I agree with, with both of you. The sessions were very, very good. Unfortunately, I haven't written up a a report. I left shortly after we got back. So soon as I get back, I will do so. But I thought the sessions were very good. They were very informative and about the right length of time to be able, there were others that I really could have listened to all day, particularly the one, there was one on censorship, which I had no idea, the rules of censorship and pornography. That's, I was shocked at that. So to learn more about that, I think is quite advantageous. But I think it was well worth it. And like I say, I will go back through all my notes when I get back and send you guys a report.
All right, that's our reports. So I've got my things in the desk right here. Now we're going to do library news.
I will keep it mercifully brief and just say, we are really opening up our services, our programming, our children's programming. That has been really exciting to see kids back and they're, they're not hesitant there. We're having, we're having a huge number, so just excited to see that. Event guide is now out for the first time in two years. So there you go.
Okay, Foundation is clicking along. We've been adding some new Foundation board members, and we're talking about coming year for Author Author, and we're right in the midst of a novel idea. So that's exciting. There are a lot of, this, this year really does some great programming, so check your events guide for that information. Now we have another executive limitations, I mean, executive session. So the Deshute's Public Library District will conduct an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions as pursuant to ORS one nine two six six zero two E. So okay. Okay, back in regular session, so I would entertain a motion.
And I move to authorize the library director to enter into a lease agreement for temporary rent in the library space in an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in a three-year lease.
A second discussion, all those in favor? Close? All right. I think that's it.
Yes, I heard. It seemed like they did the self-review.
Yeah, self-review. I think we is everybody okay to skip the self-review this time?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Have fun, Buddy.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.